Welcome to the Village Board meeting. Today is November 28th. We are in the work session now at seven until eight. Our meeting starts at eight. First item on our agenda was a presentation by Westchester Power. I recognize that man, Leo Wegman, former mayor of Troton.
I recognize you, your chair. Welcome.
Current and past and former mayor, current mayor.
Glad to see you. How are you, sir?
Very well. How are you?
I'm good. All right, tell us what you have to tell us. Sure. You want me to share this presentation?
Sure, you may do that, certainly.
You tell me, is that what you want me to do?
Is this called the owl that I hear you call?
It's called the owl, yes.
And it finds you when you're speaking?
It does, it does.
Swiveling its head?
It does, it finds.
I've been at many, many hyper presentations this summer and fall, but I haven't seen the owl.
So, we recommend it. We may have to upgrade to the next one, but for what it does, it's a great value and it follows you around.
Interesting.
Yeah. All right. All right, you're on.
So, I'm here. My name is Leo Wegman. I'm director of solar programs for Sustainable Westchester. And we're talking this evening about one of our programs called Westchester Power and one of the new offerings coming in that program. And next slide please. As many of you know, Sustainable Westchester is a consortium of member municipalities in Westchester County. The village of Pleasantville was one of the founding members of this consortium and it now comprises forty-four cities, towns and villages, including the county itself. And next slide please. We have grown from into offering quite a number of programs, including what we broadly call community energy programs. Westchester Power is one of those. Building energy related subjects such as electrifying heating and cooling of our buildings and other electrification solutions such as clean transportation and electrifying lawn care. And then also zero waste programs to reduce waste management issues. Tonight, we're just talking about community energy. Next slide please.
Before I go to the next slide, we are a part of the Recycle Right app. Oh, good. And I wholeheartedly endorse anybody who might be listening to download it and get crack of our recycling and.
But it lets you know when to put out what.
It does, which is, you know, you'd think the mayor would know when to put out.
Yeah, well, I'm the former mayor. I don't know. I have to list out my own villages there as well, for same reasons.
And we're a part of community solar as well, right?
Yes, there were quite a few participants in town that take part in the opt-in community solar program. Individual households choose to participate and that's been quite successful for us.
Make the village as well, it's been.
I think you have a couple of towns that are participating, some of your.
Yeah, I think they are, yeah.
That's fair. And the Westchester Power program is a community energy choice aggregation program. It's administered by Sustainable Westchester. There are twenty-nine of our municipalities, the ones that are in green on this map. It is a program that's regulated by the New York State Public Service Commission. And municipalities individually review and approve this program for their own adoption, for their own residents. The program does use an opt-out enrollment model. In other words, that all the eligible customers within the municipality will be opted into a particular offering unless they choose to opt out at any time at no charge for any reason. But there currently are two offerings from Westchester Power. One of them has been active since the beginning of twenty sixteen called the Energy Supply, Electricity Supply Offering. And that, with the Con Ed territory that you're in, is just being renewed this month with new rates that are going forward for two years, fixed rates. We currently, when your offers join, we currently rose to a total of one hundred and forty-five thousand households in Westchester County that now participate in our fixed rate long-term electricity supply contracts. And tonight's brief discussion is about a second offering coming down the pipe called Solar Savings, where we are awaiting, we are awaiting Public Service Commission approval for that plan to add that as a second offering. And it has a bit of a slightly different flavor, but you can think of it as an enhanced community work with a target for the low to moderate income households that are most need and most energy burdened in your municipality or in all municipalities participating. Next slide please. Our Westchester Solar Savings Offering provides solar credits on people's bills, which are monetary savings based on participants that are in the program that have chosen not to opt out. Our priority for these, this program are the low to moderate income households in each of our participating municipalities that choose to offer this that are part of the Utilities Energy Assistance Program. Now, those, these are folks who are the neediest in terms of the economic burden for energy being the highest and that they already participate in the utility assistance program that lowers their electricity supplier gas supply bill. The solar credits from these solar farms will guarantee a savings of up to ten percent, depending, which will be higher in the summer when the solar energy systems generate more than in the winter when the peaks and hours are fewer. But across the course of the year, there's a guaranteed savings for all households that are enrolled. And therefore, the Public Service Commission allows us to offer these guaranteed savings to these energy assistance program participants. We can't otherwise offer the assistance program participants a participation in the fixed rate because our fixed rate may not always be below the utilities variable rate. So, the Public Services has a requirement that we must offer, we can only offer the utility energy assistance program participants stopping through the Community Choice Aggregation Program if it's a guaranteed savings. Next slide please. Okay, some of this already. The households enrolled in the utility assistance programs, as I said, face the highest energy burden. And these households may typically be enrolled in programs such as the Home Energy Assistance Program, otherwise known as HEAT, or the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, otherwise known as SNAP, or the Supplemental Security Income Program, SSI, or Temporary Aid to Needied Families, TANF, and other such programs. And collectively, the Public Service Commission calls these folks Assistance Program Participants, or APP. But you didn't need more acronyms because we're already.
Some letters of the alphabet have not been used yet.
That's right. So, and the question is how, next slide please. How across the county are we prioritizing these utility assistance program households? So, what we've done is we've looked throughout the entire county and we don't know the identity of these folks individually because the utility knows who they are through their screening process and doesn't reveal that to us until we're actually fully implementing the program. So, we're using surrogate information, working with the county planning department and county social services, such as the number of SNAP participants, the number of food stamp participants, the number of HEAT participants that the social services knows about. And when we add those all up throughout the entire county, there's about thirty thousand such households. And there are approximately fifty-one of them in Pleasantville itself, in the village of Pleasantville, based on American Community Survey data, based on public data. And as solar projects come online, we're going to be enrolling the, these assistance program participant households on an opt-out basis, one municipality after the other, based on census tracts. And in order to serve thirty thousand such households, I would need a hundred and fifty megawatts of solar capacity. So, that's a lot of solar capacity. We currently have contracted for about eleven megawatts up to this point. Remember, we have many more megawatts to go that are going to be coming on available. But on a first come, first served basis, now there's municipalities that sign up sooner in the program will have their APP customers ahead of the queue of others who sign up later.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So, we were going to launch a community solar campaign through our Climate Smart Program. And there was, we had to kind of put the brakes on that because of.
We ran out of capacity.
Yeah. So, so is this the same supply that we're talking about and are there similar issues in terms of?
So, this, so what we, what we, what we need to do is, in either case, whether we're opting in individual households or business in, into opt-in community solar, or doing it for all fifty customers that are APP customers on an opt-out basis, we still have to use a solar farm that's somewhere in Con Ed territory. And currently, there's been a lot of uncertainty in the incentive programs coming out of New York State. So, a lot of the solar development companies have sort of pumped the brakes a little bit on finishing projects or are waiting for some clarity before they launch new projects. We think that clarity will be coming in the next four or five months because the investment, the Inflation Reduction Act that Congress passed that was signed this summer has a great deal of very strong incentives for the clean energy community that they're waiting to have codified. And Treasury is writing the guidance for that now this fall, the publish in January. That's going to open up, I won't say the floodgate, but that will certainly open up a lot of opportunities for people to come back. And then New York State is going to be revising its incentives in light of what the federal government does. So, we think in the next four to five months, a lot of projects that were sort of put on hold will be restarted and will become available. So, there's about a hundred kilo, a hundred megawatts of solar that we're tracking from thirty-five different solar developers to interest them in participating in this particular program.
Okay.
So, the variable capacity in the pipeline, once it becomes unstuck, let's say.
Right, right, right.
Yeah. And it's because of these changing policies at the federal and state level that everyone sort of waited and let's wait till the dust settles. But the news is generally quite good in terms of the positive increase in incentives coming out of the federal government and then that'll spur the state to do something additional. But in any case, the next slide please. The, so the solar savings work quite simply. The solar farm is located on some other, some other roof or some other area. It generates credits when it injects energy into the grid. And each household that, or each small business that subscribes to that solar farm is allocated a certain portion of it based on how much they typically use per month. So, if two households live across the street from each other, but one household uses twice as much electricity because it's got more family members in it or it has more appliances, one kind of other, or it has an electric vehicle or something, then, then your allocation for that household we would make would be larger than the allocation for the household that had a lower usage. But it's all in proportion. And then, as that energy is generated to the local grid, it creates a credit because the utility didn't have to go out and buy that energy somewhere else. And it's actually a savings that gets passed on to the customer. The, the, in the final step, what's happening now is that the bill that the utility will generate will show both the regular supply and then there will show a credit from this solar farm that was generated on behalf of that customer, for that customer's share of the farm on the same bill. Community solar customers up to this point had their regular utility bill with Con Ed on a monthly basis, based on how much they used. And they got a separate bill through an ACH transaction from the solar farm for what they, for what was generated on their behalf. So, those are going to be consolidated and Con Ed is consolidating those bills now. So, solar farms that come online next year will have everything consolidated so that their customer won't notice the difference. They'll just see new lines on their bill to give them a credit. Any questions? But next slide please. Because this is an opt-out program where, where customers who are currently utility customers who are eligible will be automatically enrolled unless they choose to opt out. There is a very stringent sort of notification and education outreach that we go through upfront. And so, Sustainable Westchester, we have, will perform targeted outreach in those areas that are going to be, become eligible for the program. There are specific notification letters with language that has to be approved by the Public Service Commission describing the program and describing the opt-out mechanisms. Eligible community members who get a letter in the mail will know they're eligible because they got the letter. And they'll have thirty days to subscribe before being automatically enrolled. After that thirty, and that's preceded by sixty days of outreach before that thirty days. If the households choose not to participate, they can do that at any time before the automatic enrollment or anytime after that at no cost by simply calling us, emailing us, or returning the reply card inside the envelope to the Sustainable Westchester headquarters in Montefisco. And we run a, well, yeah, so that's, so there's a stringent notification period that happens ahead of time. And our, our materials will be bilingual, English and Spanish. And we'll have the capacity to help people with other languages. Next please.
I jumped the gun. It was already in this.
What?
I jumped the gun. I had already advanced.
Oh, that's okay. A lot of people ask why we use the opt-out model. And we use the opt-out model. We've used it successfully for our electricity supply for six years. And now I have over a hundred forty thousand, almost a hundred forty-five thousand customers enrolled. The New York State Community Solar Model has been around for over five years now and has always wanted to target low to moderate income households, but has been very, very unsuccessful with very low participation rates on individual house, low income household opting in one at a time. Sometimes it's for reasons that wouldn't be immediately obvious, but sometimes households fear if they're signing something to do this, they would lose one of the other benefits they receive. Sometimes it's just a question of being unfamiliar with a new thing. Solar credits are a new thing. And sometimes it's just the, a language barrier issue or other such things. So, in this particular case, the opt-out model, where we go through a vetting process and notification, communication process is the only way that New York State will ever be able to enroll the significant number of low to moderate income households in these energy benefits of savings, dollar savings on their bill. So, the next slide please. The, I described most of this already. So, how are solar savings applied to a bill? So, when we enroll you, we look at your twelve-month energy history. We assign you a portion of a solar farm. And the electricity generated on that portion earns you a solar credit in the form of a monetary in terms of dollars. It may be ten dollars, maybe twelve dollars, maybe eighty dollars, apply to your bill. And then, you're, you are going to pay for ninety percent of that on the bill and you're going to get ten percent reduction from that. So, there's a ten percent savings, no matter what, each month, whether the, whether the total, whether the total charge for your solar from that energy, solar farm is, is eighty dollars or ten dollars, you're always going to save either the eight dollars or, or one dollar. There's a ten percent savings regardless. So, you keep ten percent of the solar credit. On the next slide is an example of what the Con Ed bills will be looking like, probably too small for people to read. But in any case, there are going to be some new lines on the bill called an adjustment, which is when you're going to get, in this case, negative one hundred dollars on your bill. So, your bill will get on one hundred dollars because it was one hundred dollars where the solar credits generated that month by your subscription, by your, your portions. And you're going to get a plus ninety dollars on the subscription fee, but the difference, ten dollars is your, is your, is your savings. That's the way Con Ed is, and it's checking.
And so, that solar saving is always going to be ten percent of the credit.
Ten percent of the, of the, of the adjustment. They're calling it an adjustment.
Yes.
Yeah, we're sort of saying that, yeah, so. Every utility that around the state has chosen to call these things something different, so. And I think I have a different, different slide for this. But either way, utilities are, either way, mathematically, it works out to be you're, you're, you're paying for electricity that was injected on your behalf into the grid at a ten percent discount each month. It's like a coupon for solar.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. So, if we, as the village of Pleasantville, enroll in this program, the low-income households that qualify would be automatically enrolled unless they choose to opt out. And then, would other households still be able to participate in the community solar?
Yes, any, any house, as capacity increases, we'll have projects where we can enroll people in on an opt-in basis, individual households. Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Right, and, and again, we're waiting for the, for the floodgates built.
So, that would be an opt-in.
That would be opt-in, yes, yeah.
Those who are not the low-income households.
Yeah, but the opt-in households would also, going forward, if someone is enrolled now in community solar and gets that second ACH transaction on their bank account ten days after their utility bill, that will be merged and only show on the utility bill.
Yeah.
And going forward, new subscribers will only be enrolled under a consolidated bill.
Right. At the point at which you understand the whole system, there is no economic reason not to participate.
Right? None that I can think of, but.
Right.
I mean, again, when we, 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 we have some experience in doing this on an opt-in basis in the town of Emeridig, where there was a solar system put on the Hummels Ice String Roof, a large solar system. The town wanted to dedicate that to low-income participants that were in their housing authority. And we spent four months painstakingly working with that community to try to enroll folks. And we did enroll about fifteen percent of the total capacity in, in from, from, from that, that list of households in, 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 in the housing. But it was, it was, it was very, it was very eye-opening that the kind of questions that we got, which were all reasonably good questions. That sort of made us aware that in order to do this, we have to, you know, make sure that people aren't afraid of losing any other benefit they're getting because of this, that because they get these benefits, they call it back to their save, afraid to rock them.
Yeah, exactly.
Next slide. Some of the benefits of, of the solar savings for the households is that there is a savings, a monetary savings without the need to do anything on your own house or your own building with solar. It just, because it's solar that's located somewhere else. It doesn't change their benefits or any other assistance programs. It doesn't change how the, how a household pays its bill. And you get to keep your, obviously, your local deliverer of electricity, Con Ed is in, the poles and wires. And if you have a different ESCO, you get to keep the ESCO for your electricity supply. So, there's no change in any of that.
And if, in the hypothetical, that you're a renter with your own sub-meter.
Yes.
It all works as it, as it would for a single-family home.
Correct.
But if you're a renter without a sub-meter, you can't, it can't be achieved.
So, yeah, so, so for households that are, that are, that, well, in that case, you wouldn't be a utility customer.
Right.
So, we wouldn't know.
Wouldn't even know that, right.
So, we have a different. I'm waiting for a year, about a big grant from Iser to go up to those folks.
Okay.
To get them enrolled on the master meters for the multi-campus affordable housing projects, all across the county. Because that's another whole category of folks.
Right.
And, and, and that we want to help, but we have to do that by going through whoever holds the master meter.
Understood, yeah.
And the benefits for communities are that it promotes climate justice. Next slide please. Because these, because these solar farms have to be, these community solar projects serving this program have to be located in Con Ed's territory, you're pretty much guaranteed to be stimulating of local renewable energy development and jobs here at the local scale. And of course, all of this advances New York State's very aggressive Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act goals of serving at least, having at least thirty-five percent of the benefits of clean energy go to the low to moderate income households in the state. Last slide, almost last slide. We do provide support services for this, as we do with all of our programs. In this particular case, there will be community outreach, which would be virtual and in-person for community information sessions as we roll this out. We're developing a lot of collateral material that'll be, could be newsletter content, social media content for flyers, et cetera. All of it will be, is going to be developed in English and Spanish. The notification letter is, has been drafted for months now, but we're still crossing our Ts and dotting our Is out. We'll get that. We're sending that, I started this week for their review. We have customer service available. Business hours nine to five, Monday through Friday, for phone calls and emails. And then we will have support, as I mentioned, for Spanish speakers. Including the fact that we're, we have several staff members who are running. And then, the critical next steps on the next slide for the bill, which is Pleasantville, would be to do two things, one of which is something you could do now, which is amend your local community choice energy aggregation law to allow the electricity supply offering that's built in there to be accompanied by a second offering of what the state calls DER, Distributed Energy Resources, as specifically the community distributed generation, i.e. community solar. And the reason the language has become broader to be distributed energy resources being offered is that we anticipate quite shortly that there will be energy storage facilities that will inject into the grid and provide, once a solar provides credits, energy storage credits that could be added as a third offering to the program. That's it. And on top of other particular wrinkles that we're working on that. I probably shouldn't describe publicly because I'll just confuse myself. But in any case, so, so the updated, we circulated a draft of the updated law and I particularized it to the one that you had already had on the books, I think. And if I need to resend that, I'm happy to do that. Or if the red line is causing you too much. We did have to do it for twenty municipalities all at once, so there was a lot of red ink everywhere, but we did something slightly different. But we have also a clean template we can send you.
Send me the clean.
Send me the clean version. I'll send you a clean template, just, just what, what we worked out with the staff attorneys at Department of Public Service so that we match all their forward-going definitions with what they want in the future.
And likely then, wouldn't have to go through this process every time.
Every time we had a new offering, you wouldn't have to go through this process again. Everything will be called Distributed Energy Resources.
So, that's great.
Meaning, it's not a big central power plant somewhere upstate. It's a distributed energy resource, whatever it is. And, and the second thing is that you would sign an administration letter with Sustainable Westchester to administer this particular offering. And we will do that once we have the green light on our implementation plan from the Public Service Commission and we know what the details are. We have a draft for that now, but I'm just going to wait till the state finishes. The enabling law is, has been through the, through the process with the Staff and Public Service Commission. And we have twelve municipalities that have already adopted it. I don't anticipate that there will be any changes in that daytime legislation based on the Public Service Commission's final approval of our, of our, so. That's about it. I'm eager to help you guys figure out what to, what, when you want to calendar that piece of local amended legislation. And the next steps for us would be, after the enabling law is adopted and after we have a green light from the Public Service Commission for our entire program, we would then conduct sixty days, sixty days of outreach at a time that we thought we had the capacity for you, for those particular customers you would likely have. And we may be doing it for twelve municipalities at once, or I'm getting ahead of myself. We have twelve municipalities already that since July have passed the enabling legislation. We have a presentation with you tonight in Pleasantville, Thursday, Summers and so on. So, we're sort of making our way through our member municipalities. And, uh, uh, let's see, all right.
So, it sounds great.
Yeah, the only thing that's left is after you approve your enabling legislation, to get you officially involved in the program, we send a copy of that to New York State plus the outreach that we blew ten, for two months after that. So, it's not an instantaneous thing. It'll take us many months. We think this program will be open for probably two and a half years, three years, before we get enough to enroll all thirty thousand. Once we do that, we're going to open it up to the folks who earn one dollar too much per month to be in the APP program. And that's another, that's another fifty thousand households in Westchester. So, we're just going to keep going. In addition, there's an opt-in program as well.
We need to drop and build support for more investment in solar.
So, correct. And, and once the energy story incentive program is clarified and that is now going to be eligible for the same thirty percent investment tax credit from the federal government as solar, we think that these solar farms will be accompanied by energy storage enough that it would double the kilowatt hours being injected into the grid, or double the value which is being injected. So, so that'll rapidly increase the capacity to offer these credits. I think that's about it.
Sounds great. So, anybody have questions, comments?
Seems great. That seems like a home run.
Okay, and so, a shout out to all of you at Sustainable Westchester.
And thank you for being so willing to row with us in the boat.
Yeah.
It's a.
Can we add a question or not?
Sure.
This program, is this different than what we just received? It's a sustainable.
Did you get a letter in the mail?
Yeah, but, but it, it was for what we used to have and then we dropped out and then we're back in. Is this different than?
This is a different, yeah, this is a different offering, but it's under the same umbrella from Sustainable Westchester called Westchester Power.
So, we'll have two choices possibly.
Well, what, what, what you got was a letter about electricity supply, about a fixed rate, two-year-long fixed rate offering for your electricity supply. And that program did pause for four months because coming out of the winter, when we rebid the contracts that would have, that would have gone live in June, my colleagues found prices that were all over the place, that were way too high. And everybody was afraid of the natural gas price shocks and one other things. So, we waited, we rebided it a second time and the same thing happened. And then we came back to all of our municipalities to say, well, we're not getting the pricing that we need. And then, we basically redid it a third time at the very end of the summer. And we got back pricing that was higher than we had had before, but we think is going to be, it's anybody's guess. It was, it was better than what we, what we had seen in the prior two bids. So, then the municipalities chose to accept that price. And so, that's what it will be going forward for two, two years fix. Now, in the meantime, Con Ed is already told us that they expect a twenty-seven percent or more rate increase this winter, no matter what. So, we expect there to continue to be quite a bit of price volatility in the market due to swings in the natural, price of natural gas and due to sort of external circumstances like, you know, the war in Ukraine and, and, and all, other, other things that are sort of beyond our control. And the fact that, you know, a lot of natural gas is being liquefied here and it should be shipped to Europe. Not available here, so. So, that letter you got was a letter notifying you of the renewal of the program and your ability to opt out if you chose to stay with the variable rate that Con Ed is in or chose to go to a different ESCO.
Okay, thank you.
And you, you still have time to call us to opt out if you like. If you want to wait and see, you can wait and see.
No, no, it was good before.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We think it's, we got.
The only difference there was if, in that program that I think I'm in now.
Okay.
If you chose to do the solar part of it, the kilowatt hour was higher, the rate, than if you went to the standard.
Correct. So, we have, in the Westchester Power electricity supply, we always have two prices. One is for a standard grid mix, which has some natural gas in it. Forty percent natural gas. And then, the other is a one-hundred percent renewable energy back rate, which is just purely wind, wind, effective wind and hydro. But, and that price is. Um, but, uh, and that price is always a tiny bit higher than the than the grid mix. Um, but in this case, the interesting thing was, um. I can go off on top of this thirty more seconds, is that when we, when we look at the nat, the renewable energy credit price we got going forward. For two years from now through November twenty twenty four. That price we ended up getting was lower than what's available from any other SGO around. So we figure we, so, yeah, it's a little higher than the standard mix. So you have two, you have two good options. You can go to the standard mix, which is a little lower, or you can go with the renewable energy price, which is going to be, if you want to buy renewable energy. And don't mind paying, paying a half a penny more, you're going to spend less for that than if you go out on the open market to an SGO. Well, I won't name any of them, but we just, we shopped around to see what, how our price stacked up.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you, Leo, and again, thanks to all of your colleagues at Sustainable Westchester.
Yeah.
Great stuff going on.
Thank you. I'll be in touch with Mr. Morris.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're great, thank you. All right, so and next up on our agenda. Um. Uh, debrief about our many conversational garden, uh, development. So we had, uh, town hall on, on the sixteenth. And the folks who might be watching this work session. Don't have the capacity to do that. I don't, do I? I'll talk louder. We've. Close up front more. Modified our, uh, uh. And are not paying to have a camera person at the back of the room, so come forward if you, if you're having total hearing, but I'll try to talk louder in any event. So, um, we had our town hall on the, on the, uh, sixteenth. And for anyone who might have missed it, the full tape of that is up at acpd seventy six dot org. Uh, and folk can, uh, take a look at that. A few things, um, to report about that. We had a list of about thirty questions that had been, uh, given to us. Uh, via email, which we had intended to answer, but the evening ran late enough that the audience was razor-leaved when. What, when, uh, when we got to the point of answering that, so I think we're going to put up a video trying to answer those questions, a bunch of them, or at least. Parts of a bunch of them, I think, had already been addressed in the course of the, uh, evening. But we will put up a video about that. There was also some commentary that night, but also in anecdotal discussion thereafter about. The seven o'clock time not being the most convenient for all parties, and so, uh. Bunch of folks said people with small kids might prefer an eight o'clock start, something of that kind. So we'll definitely have, uh, at least one further event. Trying to aim at a later, uh, opportunity, and I think it's fair to say any, all five of us are happy, as some of us already have. Uh, to have chats with individuals or small groups, uh, to hear what they all have to say. So I'll speak for myself and my colleagues can, uh, chime in, uh, as they wish, but, um. Takeaways clearly, uh, as, as you all know, uh, folks. Interested in the idea of a moratorium of some kind on development. Uh, which would be a, a, a legal pause, uh, on some aspect of development. So, um, that is something I think we're open to and, uh, had a preliminary conversation with our planner and legal counsel. Obviously, the goal there would be to tailor it in a manner that addresses the issues that people have surfaced. As opposed to a blanket thing that captures a whole bunch of projects that aren't really the problem. So, um, uh, that's a matter that we'll get some further advice on and have further conversations between us and. With all of you about how that might look, uh, but have begun that conversation. Um, a bunch of people, uh, expressed concern about, uh, aesthetic standards and. An interest in the idea that there might be some clearer design standards for various kinds of development. And, uh, again, that's something obviously that, uh, warrants a further investigation, a little bit hard to pull off. Um. As you might imagine, uh, design standards are in the eye of the holder and and there certainly is universal agreement about that. That said, there are some templates out there and, uh, we're going to dig through them and, uh, ask our planner to forward. Some relevant samples that maybe would be a good way forward. As a, as an aside, related but unrelated, um, a few months back, we engaged BFJ plan, uh, BFJ, our consultant planners. Uh, to take a look at the standards for our historic district overlay. Which is zoning that covers essentially Bedford Road all the way out to the old village and then turns left and continues out. Uh, another block or two, um, to take a look at that legislation that was written back in the eighties. Uh, which expresses a goal, but leaves a little bit, uh, loosey goosey, the, uh, uh, implementation of that goal. So, um, BFJ was of the opinion that there might be some opportunity to give our architectural view board, which is one of the same as our planning commission. Uh, uh, both clearer guidance and also clearer, uh, enforcement. Uh, rights over some of that stuff, so that piece is ongoing already and perhaps it dovetails with. Some of the comments that, uh, folks had made. So, um, I also think we'll continue the conversation with everybody about. Uh, what it is that people are really looking to tackle. Some folks have said just interested in a pause in the flow of stuff that's coming at us. Some folks have been primarily focused on traffic issues more than, um. More than, uh, the specific issue of development, so part of the question is to unpack as we. Uh, have always sought to do, but will continue to, to unpack, uh, the im, the impacts of some of these things. So just one interesting example, four forty four Bedford Road, the bank building at the corner of Wheeler and Bedford is. One that, as I think most of you know, is the subject of a, uh, proposed redevelopment. That, uh, has now applied, but I think is before the planning commission for the first time at their next meeting. Um, that's a project that would convert that building and its parking lot into, uh, into a residential project. Wrapping, uh, new construction around the building. And, uh, one interesting question there, having nothing to do with the question of whether that project is. Wise at this point or not, is the question of what its traffic impact might be as compared. As a residential use as compared to its existing, um, I think. Perhaps only half full office occupancy, so all those things are things to balance out. And looming, obviously, uh, outside the downtown, but as a very big piece. For the Village of Pleasantville is the former Bank of New York backup site, one hundred and forty thousand square foot building and a potentially. Potential twenty some odd acre site, uh, that's up behind Foxwood, uh, at the top of the hill. Which is currently zoned campus office. It is currently, um, with the exception of the Saturday hearing building, which. I believe is potentially part of the offering, but not necessarily definite. But what what certainly is known is one hundred and forty thousand square foot building that was once the. Site of a Bank of New York backup facility is is no longer owned by them, and, uh, it's being offered for sale. It is vacant and, uh, I think both the village and the school district reasonably, uh, settled a pretty big tax cert. On that property handing back quite a bit of money because of the fact the property is. Uh, currently generating no income, so interesting question. And lots of folks have said to me, oh, my God, I I I'm not interested in more residential there, and other folks have said, oh, my God, I'm not interested in commercial there. And, um, it gives rise to the kind of conversation we all need to have together to talk about what that might look like, so. Um, short takeaway, again, me speaking, my colleagues will chime in, is I think over the next some weeks, it's going to be. A little difficult to make too much progress during this holiday season, just coming out of the Thanksgiving weekend with the. Hanukkah, Christmas and other holidays coming up, uh, soon, um. Folks have lots on their minds, but certainly as we move back into the new year, I think we'll be continuing to engage this conversation and. And in the meantime, certainly engaging the conversation with lots of all of you. Um, I've had lots of conversations with folks who've reached out to me, and I think that's true of most of my colleagues. You guys have a sort of a thought on any of that?
Uh, sure, so, um, so, yeah, so it was interesting to have, um, the meeting. Um, you know, I think in some ways we feel like we're at a similar stage as, even though we know more. As a lot of people who were in the audience, in the sense that we are learning as we go along and figuring out, um. You know, what the options, uh, might be and what the most prudent ways to move forward. Um, so, um, you know, I I heard a lot of things that Peter has already mentioned. We've all individually, I think, had people come to us. There were certainly. There were people who felt less comfortable speaking in a public venue, a little bit nervous about hearing opinions. That might seem contrary to some of the things that were said at that meeting. Um, and so I think there's some concern about hearing from as many people as possible. Um, just continuing on what Peter was saying, I, one of my personal concerns is what's going to happen with that Bank of New York site. And I think it poses some, you know, a bit, a bit of a dilemma and, um. I think, you know, we need to really dig into it and see what the options are and then, you know, have some community feedback about what. You know, the best plan would be moving forward. Uh, one of the things that I'm involved with as well that came up during the meeting is, um, I'm working with the, um, a group. Uh, from the Conservation Advisory Council, and there are also some people from the climate smart community who are working on a tree ordinance. Because one of the concerns that has come up is especially when we're talking about new development in areas that haven't been developed yet is. You know, what will the impact on the the natural resources be? Um, and so we're hoping to have some kind of draft legislation available. In the not too distant future, and it'd be interesting to hear feedback from the community on on that as well. But I I s- I second Peter's, um, comment that I think we're open to some kind of moratorium and we need to. You know, understand better like what all of the variables are, what what the reasonable possibilities are going forward.
Um, I was, I was really happy to see a lot of community involvement. I think it's good to to get an idea from everyone or feelings. Um, I did feel that there might be. An underrepresentation of everyone that was there, um, and that was evident by the emails that were received after as well. Of people speaking that they would have spoken, but they just felt, you know, the the cheering and the. You know, they felt that they would be in a situation where they couldn't speak freely because they would feel as if, you know, they were getting booed or something. So there was a concern about that, but I appreciated all the, 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 you know, ideas that people had, the concerns. Um, I think that without a doubt, you know, we have our work cut out for us and that. Um, you know, we we really need to look into this more. Um, I I do think that, you know, some things we can't control, some things we can't. So I I do look forward to finding that middle ground where I think that, you know, we can definitely. Do progress, move in a, in a, in a way where we can, we can't please everyone, but I think we can do a good job of of listening to everyone's concerns. Um, I do feel that, as as my colleagues have said here on the board, that a lot of the issues were kind of all over the place. There were a lot of concerns about traffic, a lot of concerns about school pickups, a lot of concerns about buildings. And then, you know, with the snail of of the parking lot. That kind of is just there as as the main thing that's happening right now. But I think we do have to look at a bunch of other, um, factors that are really going to affect, you know, whether an office building. Has the same effect as, let's say, the building right here in Bedford Road became a residential building. I think that's a big difference. But, um, I I'm open to more discussions. I've also, um, something that I want to introduce to all my colleagues here is is being able to put. The agendas now on social media or meetings, because I think a lot of people want to be more aware of these. And I I want to welcome more people to be here so that any decisions that are made are 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 more, you know, transparent. I I do feel that it's important to note that the building being built, that that that's already been built, that's in progress. This went through a whole rigorous process and it went through meetings. People got to see renderings of the building. Um, it's, it's, you know, it's, it's, it was shown. It wasn't as if it was something that just kind of, here's a surprise, this is what we're building. And so I think that that needs to happen more at a level where we have control to do it. Um, you know, there's a lot of members that that I think were present at those meetings. I can even say it, for me, I wasn't even a part of the board yet. Jonathan was, he was sitting where I was sitting. Uh, not necessarily here, but. Well, that's what I meant, not necessarily here, but he was a part of those decisions that were made about that building. So, you know, things, things.
You weren't a part of.
Sure, no, he departed too soon for that.
I bailed way before that.
So nevertheless, though, there has been a lot of different board members that have been a part of receiving these procedures. So I think that it's not as simple as, and I think that's the important message, the last thing I want to say is not as if we're. Hey, we're doing this and, you know, get on the ride or get off. Not at all like that. The whole reason why we have that event is to notify everyone. We're trying to do to get everyone's input. And then to make the best decision we can make going forward. But again, I appreciate everyone that made that meeting and I appreciate all you being here for continuing and being involved in this matter. Uh, we've taken, at least for me, we take it very, very seriously. We want to make sure that we do what's best for the village.
Um. I I thought it was a very interesting meeting. I I I appreciated hearing people's points of view. Um, the development in town has proceeded pretty close to the master plan. That was a process that took multiple years, involved a lot of community input. And I think it's actually a good point to sort of look at that and say, um, you know, how has the world changed? Uh, the world's changed a lot in the last two years. Um, we were all screaming at each other, people, people were screaming at each other about parking for commuting. Three years ago, that is no longer an issue. Um, the, nobody has any problem parking for commuting in the village anymore. Um, and the the need for parking in the village actually is completely different from what it was just three years ago. Um, so, uh, it, our, our entire circumstances have changed and and that in in itself. Uh, makes it a a worthy process to really look at what's happening. To take an evidence-based, fact-based approach to development in the village. Um, and also to listen to people's emotional feelings about it. Um, we heard from twenty three people, um, uh, in the town hall. Um, and, uh, you know, and nineteen of them felt pretty strongly, uh, uh, unhappily about what was going on. And those are all important opinions. We need to to reach further out to the village. A third of our village is renters. There is very little of that opinion expressed. We don't know how they feel yet, really. Uh, twenty eight percent of our village is non-white. We didn't really hear from many of those residents, uh, if any, at all either. So, um, uh, we have a process to go through, I think, to understand what to do next. We also heard from people who want more green space in the village, um. And, you know, those are complicated things, uh, we're a village with a relatively small budget and, um. A lot of things to balance with all the projects that we have, like trying to, uh. Make sure we have a pool that people can swim in, uh, within the next couple of years. And, uh, make sure that we have a water system that's running and all of that, so it it's a lot to to manage. I, the the only thing I would say about a moratorium, I'm personally. Cautious, I was a political science student through graduate school and, and since then, uh, a lot of my work. In the last few years has been with communities and, um. The, the, the most important law to know, I think, with development is the law of unintended consequences. Uh, which is, uh, it's like a stochastic model in economics where you try to adjust for something that already happened. And your adjustment has an unexpected effect. And the thing I'm potentially concerned about now is, um, the number of vacant storefronts that we have going into what could be a recession. Um, and so I think we need to just be careful about how we, how we tune anything that we might do going forward.
So we're coming up on eight o'clock or at eight o'clock here, uh, so I I guess I, uh, too much time to to speak, but. Um, on the major issues of the day, um, I I agree that I am open to a moratorium. I'm open to discussing how that could be, uh, legal and targeted and have the fewest number of unintended consequences. Because I agree with it, while while I'm open to a moratorium, I agree with David that I'm concerned about unintended consequences, especially considering how some of the best. New businesses in town have come here because of the increased foot traffic and the increased vitality of the center, so. Uh, it's a, it's a difficult balance to strike, um. It's, you know, I often think about right sizing, right? If you're, you're not trying to grow a business or shrink a business, you're trying to right size a business or right size a team or right size human resources. And we're, we're trying to right size the balance of commercial and and residential. We also have industrial, uh, we're, we're, uh, we have it all here in Pleasantville, so we're trying to right size those things with our zoning. Um, what I heard loud and clear is that, um, the people who were at the town hall do not think we are right sizing the town, right? So there's a sense that that, uh, one, one or two pieces of it have, uh, have got, gone too far. And in, and in some ways, in some ways, the, you know, private property owners ha- have have just seized on a moment. Where there's a housing crisis in Westchester County and 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 further out, and they seize on an opportunity to, to use their property of the highest, the best use. As as private property owners. Uh, as those, those who are owners in this room would, would also do, um, in many cases, and try to, to use your, your property at, at its highest and best use. Um, but we do have things we can do. And so like I said, I'm, I'm open to the discussion of a moratorium. Um, on, on other big issue of the day, which I don't think anyone brought up except, except Paul, the, the lane lot. Um, I am, I'm absolutely uh, happy to pause that. Uh, that was a clear message from, from the town hall. And that seems like something we can, uh, we can sit on and revisit, um, and, and do some waiting. And some of those discussions are, you know, are between uh, are, are not for public consumption because of the private matter, but a, a lot of them will be for public consumption, I think. Um, correct me if I'm wrong on that, Peter. So, so on the, the big issues of the day, that's kind of where I stand. I thought the town hall was a good example of local democracy in action and people airing their, uh, addressing their government with things that frustrate them, as is the First Amendment right? And, and as a patriotic person, I, I was uh, happy to participate in that.
All right, great. So um, just about eight P M., we're a little past eight P M., we're gonna start a regular meeting and rather than uh, for any of you with uh, the excitement of our introductory local law public hearings, we're gonna start, uh, as I start the meeting, I'll invite public comment upfront. So you don't have to wait, although you were invited to, to share the whole meeting. All right, you ready? Yeah, all right. Uh, good evening and welcome to the Village Board Meeting. Uh, today is Monday, November twenty-eighth, uh, and uh, we have just completed a work session that began a little past seven, uh, and uh, move into our regular business tonight. Our next uh, regular meeting is two weeks from today, which is Monday, November twelfth. And just a couple of announcements to make, I'll keep them short and then we'll invite a public comment on any subject. Uh, but uh, first and foremost, uh, this week on Thursday, uh, we have our annual lighting ceremony, uh, kicking off the holiday season. So that's Thursday, December one, this coming Thursday, starting at seven P M. Shout out to the Chamber of Commerce. Paul can fill us in on some of the festivities, but um, uh, the piece I wanted, uh, particularly to put a point uh, on is that we have a brand new tree. Uh, I hope most of you who've driven by have seen it. It's uh, smaller obviously than the tree we once had, but it's actually vertical instead of leaning at a thirty-degree angle. Uh, the, the tree that uh, we've all come to know and love was headed for trouble. And so um, uh, on the advice of an arborist, we removed it, made some improvements to the, to the infrastructure uh, there and have planted a new tree, which I think looks great. Gonna kick off a couple of new uh, traditions, but uh, Paul, what, what are they?
So we have um, our sponsors of the village always helps us out with this, um, Chamber of Commerce and also Pace. So Pace donates the hot chocolate, so I'll be picking that up. Um, the event itself starts at seven P M., but we'll be setting up there around six-thirty by six-forty-five. We're gonna have a band, a live band that will be playing music for anyone who wants to come in before. Um, this year we've added a food truck. We have wooden fire that's gonna be there providing food, so in case somebody didn't get a chance to get dinner. Um, we'll try that. Um, we planned the fest, the festivities, the dedication to the tree that happened at seven-thirty. We also have um, the middle school, I believe choir that's gonna be singing. Um, I think a song or two, and then you figure the, the event will end by about seven-forty-five and eight is really when we'll finish off. So if anyone's looking to come a little later, looking at the lighting will probably be close to seven-thirty. Um, but obviously come before, um, it's a great event. We, we expect to see a lot of people there. Last year we had a lot of people, it really just depends on the weather and so far, I think, so good. So um, we welcome everyone. Like I said, the, the hot chocolate, we donate, um, the food truck, you will pay on your own on that. And I think uh, the village will provide candy canes. I think we're also gonna have some cookies for the kids, so we look forward to seeing everyone there.
Great, thank you, Paul. Thank you, Chamber of Commerce. Thank you, Pace. Thank you, all those folks. So um, we started in our work session, uh, a couple of interesting things, including a presentation by Sustainable Work, uh, Westchester about a solar program for uh, lower income households. But uh, we also spent some time with each of us, offering some comment as sort of a debrief on our town hall, which took place on uh, Wednesday, the sixteenth. So rather than repeat all of that, if any of you have uh, logged in uh, uh, just for the regular meeting, that was all recorded and you can pick that up uh, on an on-demand webcast quite soon at uh, ecpdseventy-six dot org. So I won't uh, go through that whole again. Uh, but before we launch into our regular uh, resolutions and the two public hearings we have, we'll invite comment on any subject from any member of the public. Come visit, come to the podium, give us your name and address and tell us what's on your mind.
Yes, Tom Rooney, twenty-six, Hillview Drive.
Welcome to the hour.
The um, the meeting, uh, the town hall meeting, as you know, I come to many of these meetings and that was the one time I had a business trip I could not get out of and I couldn't be there, so I sent all of you of my, they weren't questions, they were just thoughts. But what I would just like to, to, to share very quickly, which is not like me tonight, is I have a comprehensive development plan of the village of Pleasantville from nineteen sixty-one. I was ten years old, so I did not write anything inside it. The um, this was the first plan, to my knowledge, that the village did. I don't know how many came after it, but-
So, okay, I don't need to, right, I just want to say, um, uh, if you go to pleasantville-n y dot gov, um, we have posted quite a few of those and I imagine a concentration of that, as well as some that preceded it, even the fifty, so it's interesting reading, so.
Yep. What I think could sum up what myself and what others are trying to say or did say at the meeting. By the way, I did painfully sit for three hours and watch the, the meeting when I got home.
All right.
And it was clear to me that the majority, if not everyone, clearly was telling the board, asking the board, please do something. If you can't do it one way, find a way of doing it another way. Uh, but what I would like to read you, that was out of this plan of sixty-one years ago. Land use plans and proposed zoning patterns. A land use plan is an attempt to arrange the future land use throughout the community in accordance with a carefully conceived and broadly stated comprehensive planning policy. The general objectives, which the land use plan is intended to accomplish or encourage are as follows. At all times, Pleasantville should provide a safe, healthy, pleasant and convenient environment for all its residents, particularly so as to foster wholesome family living. The objective should be achieved as developed, as the village develops and when it reaches its ultimate development level. The types of residential development in the village should be limited to those which will maintain the, in capital letters, the small village atmosphere that characterizes Pleasantville today. Consequently, future apartment development is intended to be strictly limited. That is published way back sixty-one years ago. They were concerned then and we are still concerned now, so not too much has changed, even though a lot has changed. Um, the only other quick comment that I would make with the, with the uh, uh, the apartments present and, and, and to come, uh, and with the, the village parking lot. I mean, why do we need more office space when the bank is office space that nobody wants to use? So why couldn't the developers who want to develop a new property with offices just use one of the already vacant buildings here that the landlords are dying to rent? So that's just a question I'd like to throw, uh, throw out to you. And um, uh, the, whether the people at the meeting were discussing traffic, parking, or just the amounts of people in the village, the bottom line is the same. It's not maintaining the small Pleasantville, vi- village as many of us who came and are here are here because, be, be, because of that. Um, so with that, I uh, thank you for listening and um, if anybody wants to read the comprehensive plan as nineteen sixty-one, I'd be glad to lend it to you.
So, thank you, thank you for that, Tom. You, you don't have to bother Tom to, to get it. So if you go to pleasantville-n y dot gov, uh, we have a, a bunch of boxes under Citizen Action Center, uh, a box for Pleasantville Posts, and then a long list of links below. If you go down to Master Plan Project-
I was there today.
Yes, uh, uh, you, you will see, among other things, the nineteen fifty-nine Central Business District Plan, the nineteen sixty-one Comprehensive Development Plan that Tom just referred to, the nineteen seventy-three Long Range Development Plan, nineteen ninety-five, twenty seventeen, uh, information about the workshops that led to that, a whole bunch of other stuff. So you can see that whole document and I really encourage people to take a look, cause uh, it's very, very, very interesting, uh, uh, including as you will see, um, a, a number of things that are, are uh, 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 sort of horrifying uh, aspects of the mindset at the time, including the idea that that Manville Road should be blasted through the village uh, as a, as a future Westchester Expressway. Um, so all kinds of stuff goes into those plans and it's very, very interesting to see what the history was of the community. And I just toss out one little piece that is of interest, uh, I think it was the fifty-nine plan, uh, has a pretty detailed um, discussion of, of the retail economy of Pleasantville and it indicates that the average Pleasantville resident spent something like seventy-five percent of their uh, uh, retail expenditures in the village of Pleasantville. And um, as you can imagine, that gave rise to the community we once had, the hardware store and multiple places to buy shoes and clothes and stationery and two different drugstores and uh, all, all of the above stuff that, that existed in one form or another into the nineties. Um, and boy, you know, in the category of things that have changed, that's one of them. Uh, it must be that, that average Pleasantville person spends a, a much smaller fraction of their total uh, retail expense in, in downtown. So I diver generate, pleasantville-n y dot gov, if you're uh, interested in that, uh, I, I encourage you to dig into it, because it really provides an interesting perspective.
The, the question about the office building did come up, by the way. Um, uh, I was actually wondering like, is there a need for offices in Pleasantville, you know, or, or not? Um, apparently, this is an open question, but apparently the feedback that I've gotten is that there is a need because there are not very many quality office spaces um, in Pleasantville. And so I think for that existing building to be more functional, it would have to be renovated for an office use, which would theoretically be, be possible. Um, one potential downside to that is that might involve uh, a greater need for, for parking and, you know, more cars. But anyway, that's, um, I think it's an interesting question to pose, yeah.
All right, other speakers?
Uh, Jonathan Cunningham, fourteen, Tidley Lane. Um, a, a, a few observations. First of all, uh, Michael touched on it, but I, I thought the most pressing uh, issue uh, uh, confronting the board right now, uh, and one that uh, is in your control is actually the sale of the lot, the lane lot, uh, which you could decide to not, you didn't want to do. Um, and yet the only person I heard from was Michael on that subject. Where does everybody else stand on the, the sale of the lot, the lane lot, now that you've heard community feedback?
I, I think we, we all feel like that has to be put on hold. Well, I don't know, I shouldn't speak for everyone.
That's great. We're not, we're not, we're, we're not rushing to do that.
Okay.
For sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
Jeff does the, again, speaking personally, I think the project has lots of merits. And I think that the impacts of it um, uh, are likely uh, different from the impacts of some of the other things we've seen, but we're certainly not gonna rush into that.
Okay, good, good to hear.
Yeah.
Um, uh, the other question I had was, it seemed like, and, and maybe I'm, I'm reading the tea leaves wrong, but that there was uh, and, and I completely understand the dynamic of folks having a different opinion than what might be in the room at the time, so there's an intimidation factor that they don't want to stand up. Have you received a lot of feedback from people who are pro-development and are pro uh, 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 moving forward with a, a lot of this in the village that, that, that was not the sentiment of the meeting um, uh, uh, on the sixteenth?
Well, so, I mean, I'll, I'll speak first, Peter can take over. I think the majority of the feedback that we've gotten was people who are concerned about development, which is not surprising, right? Like generally you hear about, you, you know, you've dealt with this, right? Like the loudest voices are always the ones who are the most upset or concerned about something. Um, we have heard from some people who have said we like what's going on. We've certainly heard but plenty of people who like, for instance, the, the building at Seventy Memorial. Um, and then there's another contingent, which I have said, I have heard from people like my husband, who, for whom this is a non-issue, you know? So, so, so those are non-people who are writing to us, right? But, uh, but yeah, and, and we did have some people who said, you know, we felt differently, but we didn't want to speak up in the meeting. And, and that's something that I've experienced in other situations too, you know, when you have like a very vocal set of people and there's this sense of like, I don't know if I want to speak up in front of my neighbors and, you know, disagree with them in a public setting.
Yeah, I'm, I was just curious, because, because um, I'm out in the community a lot and, and uh, maybe I'm not as approachable as I think I am, but for the most part, people are, haven't been shared, shy to share their opinions with me, even if they disagree with me. Usually if they disagree with me, they're more than willing to share their opinion with me. So um, and I just hadn't heard that much uh, uh, pushback to the idea that we are moving forward with a lot of development too quickly.
We tend to get, connect, we tend to be connected to people who are more like us, whatever we're like. So there's seventy-four hundred people in the village. Any one of us probably knows two hundred or three hundred
Correct.
at the max, and they tend to align with me, so you just-
And, and, and David, I, I, I agree with that. Um, socially, social media tends to be a, a, a bit of an equalizer on that and you, you do, you do see, I don't know what social media you're reading, but I, 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 I seem to see people completely try to obliterate the other side, um, whether they're trolling or not. Um, so anyway, I was just curious as to the mix of feedback you were hearing behind the scenes versus what you were hearing in the meeting, that's all.
Here's what I- Everything that everyone has said is absolutely true. Um, and as I think all of us know, if, if you have some time with somebody, and obviously we, we all don't have that much time with everybody else and true of every in the community, um, you know, there's a lot to unpack here, right? It, it, it isn't, it, it, there, there are all kinds of, of aspects to this. Uh, as I already mentioned, I think we're open to the idea of a moratorium, but for a bit of what David said, we're also anxious not to create unintended con- consequences. Um, you know, in, in uh, some respects, the, the situation we're in is, is one that other communities might envy, uh, which is to say, too many people, uh, s- suddenly a lot of people want to be here, uh, certainly on the residential side, a lot of people want to be here and have, have been willing to spend a lot of money to do it. Um, so much so that you, you know, you start to worry about the the world where, who knows where regular people will live. Um, but at the same time, we, we have a vibrant downtown. I mean, I, I mean, it's a few people, uh, I was trying to unload stuff out of my office to, to throw in the dumpster that I had in my driveway and I had to come back four times the last time at like ten at night because it was too busy downtown on a rainy Sunday. So as you well know, that wasn't the case. Uh, uh, in, in our memory and so, um, you know, that's good in lots of ways. It's, it's certainly problematic in some ways, but um, you know, we're trying to, we're, we're, we're trying to navigate all of that and I think uh, we're, we're not in the circumstance right now where there is some urgent need to, you know, do something tonight. Right? Uh, but what I do mean to do tonight is to say, um, you know, we, we totally hear you and I, I don't mind saying, as I've said in the past, I'm first in line in saying, um, a lot is coming down the pipe at us uh, very fast. And um, it's not because the board changed zoning in any area except the one block that includes the post office. Everywhere else this stuff could have happened twenty years ago, just that the uh, situation of landowners and the situation of potential uh, developers is different than it was for the last twenty years. So um, that gives rise to the comments we've all heard from you all and from- that gives rise to the comments we've all heard from you all and from here that the economic condition, the vibrancy of the community, the strength of the residential base, the the strong school district, the changing dynamics post-pandemic where so many more people are home during the week. And it certainly was a light motif, and understandably so, about the congestion around pickup and drop-off at the schools in an environment where there are fewer kids than there were ten years ago. So it's not the more kids, it's that there are the people, the dynamics have changed, and it isn't clear where that's going to end either. You know, obviously, we're seeing all of that as regards to partying. So I do think we'll engage a thoughtful process. I do think we'll keep talking to folks, and I think a little more nuanced understanding will arise for all of us on all sides about that. And I can say I have great confidence in B F J planning and in Keenan Bean as our legal advisor. So I think we got the right team on board as well. So.
Two other comments and one on the and you helped me segue into this, on the comment of unintended consequences. And I've heard David make this comment a couple of times about concerns for the vibrancy of the downtown and empty storefronts. David, I don't know what you're hearing, but I'm hearing this has got more to do with how high the rents are than it does with demand for retail space. Now, that's, you know, take that for what it's worth. It's more anecdotal than it is any sort of research that I've done. But the thought process of a number of these landlords is we're going to have a lot more people in town. I'm not giving that space away at this point. So I don't know if the, you know, I don't know if it's a chicken and egg situation, whether or not the fact that you're not seeing these spaces being rented is a function of lack of demand because of a pending recession or the fact that the landlords see this as an opportunity in the future, and they're not giving their space away. So all I can tell you is that every, the majority of these new developments all have retail space. So clearly, they see an opportunity there.
For sure. So just to engage with all of it, for sure, there's no question that people who are looking at renting the space perceive the rent to be too high. That's why they're vacant, right? So the question is whether, you know, the effect of renters coming in will be to make retail more viable, given those rents, meaning renters are more likely to walk, they're more likely to be in, you know, consuming services in the village. Will that allow allow us not to turn into a high-end boutique town? And to have, you know, beyond the bookstore and a couple other enduring stores have viable retail, or is the whole world moving in a different direction? Or, you know, what's going to happen? I don't think we know the answer to that. It's a fair question.
No, and I'm just saying that there's a unintended consequences work both ways.
Well, yeah, no, for sure. I mean, I certainly don't know every landlord, but over the years, I I've either come to know or certainly had some engagement with many of the commercial landlords downtown. And I'm not aware of anyone saying I'm going to hold out because I think there's a gravy train right around the corner. Maybe somebody's thinking that. I don't know the answer to that. But what I will say is, is why I hear from them is the same thing I hear from homeowners, which is taxes are too high. And our capacity to rent these properties and to invest in our buildings and to make a reasonable return on our big investment is affected by all of that. So, you know, it all feeds into the mix.
Yeah, the only part of that that doesn't make, I mean, the only part of that that you lose a thread on is that the biggest development right across the street and potential development on Washington all have a retail component to them. So they're talking on both sides of the.
No, they're not. They're not. Those developers have built modern retail with the conditions that are attractive to stores. We have a lot of storefronts that are difficult in one way or another. We have a lot of storefronts that don't have a basement, that don't have a capacity to provide parking for employees or, you know, as you well know, you've certainly heard many of those conversations. So and it goes to the office space too, that we do have office space in the village. My personal business has been in the village now for more than twenty years in two different office spaces. I've looked at a bunch of office spaces and we have a lot of office spaces that are not certainly not what you would call modern office spaces. When I say modern, I don't mean in their appearance, I mean in their quality and their services, in the restrooms, in the infrastructure, the utilities, da-da-da-da-da. So.
Your office is a case in point, right? It was not a, until the landlord decided to upgrade that building.
Yes.
It was not a desirable, and he had trouble renting it. He upgraded the building.
Well, he wanted and made a significant investment. So landlord that has a big real estate footprint, owns many buildings, and has the capacity to do that. And one of the struggles we have, and Tom would be a good spokesman, but it is this was once a community, the nineteen sixty-one report makes clear where, you know, in many cases, the family that lived down the street were the people that ran the stores. I mean, Barclay's Hardware at Twenty-Five Wheeler, which remained in existence when I first lived here. Marion Cornell lived around the corner from me, and she and her husband Buck had had been the proprietors of that. You know, we don't live in that world anymore. And real estate values are high enough that when people buy these properties, they're in deeper than was the case a few generations ago. So these are all complicated dynamics, but, you know, just like homeowners, when somebody comes along to offer a high price, most folks are going to take the high price. So we're in a very different world, as you well know, from the standpoint of the dynamics of of commercial real estate. But I will say, if we have to have the problem of too much interest versus no interest, perhaps we're on the better side of that equation and perhaps the tools we have, limited though they are, certainly we have the capacity to change zoning, and that may be the result of this. But but as you well know, at various points, the board has changed zoning towards a goal, and it's ten, twenty, thirty years before that goal was realized, in part because properties don't change hands, somebody doesn't want to make the investment, the current property owner isn't interested, you know, all those things go into it. So.
So it brings me to my last two points. One, parking is cyclical. I will just tell you that we didn't have a parking problem in the late nineties. We didn't have a parking problem in two thousand seven, two thousand eight.
I think we did have a parking problem. The dynamics were different. There was a waitlist in two thousand seven and eight for commuter parking.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. All I can say is that the the my point being, I wouldn't draw on a, I wouldn't draw conclusions yet on whether we have a parking problem based on the impact of a pandemic that has changed quickly the way that the business community has conducted its business, because I do see signs that it's trying to change back. So I think it's, I think it's interesting to note, and I saw, and I've heard David, excuse me, Michael say that, you know, we don't have a parking problem, we have parking issues at times. And I completely agree with that. But I do think that there could be a time in the not-too-distant future, next couple of years, where we have parking issues again. So we are a community in this community, community village and.
Well, it's interesting, all true. Well, what I wanted to say about that, don't mean to cut you off, but
Yeah, I'm used to it.
We have an interesting circumstance here where Friday night, we have a parking problem.
Right. For Michael's point.
Friday at one o'clock, where we used to have a parking problem, we don't. And, you know, we've got higher level of congestion at school pickup and drop-off. Not that that was ever an easy scene. And, you know, all of these things are the result of these changes, and some of them are cyclical. But I am certainly not of the view at the moment that we should not be thinking about ways to preserve our existing parking stock and and to the extent that we can find graceful, affordable ways to do it to enhance it.
And finally, the moratorium, I'm glad to hear that you're willing to consider that under certain circumstances. I think there are viable reasons, and I also think it's got the benefit of I've heard each one of you comment on the conundrum of the Bay of New York Bank Center up on the hill. It will give you time to do that work without something coming in that would be unexpected. But I would also urge you to to the degree that that property owner has ideas, he can come to you with it. You don't necessarily have to solve that issue.
Of course, one of the issues for potential moratorium is whether it would incorporate that or not. Right? It could be focused on the downtown district, which is the subject of most of the visible concern. Of course, that site is kind of out of sight, out of mind, and it's also a site that has significant implications. And I will say it is not at all clear. I have been involved with that for quite a long time, and as soon as we knew it became available, we engaged B F J to help us start thinking about that as well. And I will say in the category of of if not this, then what? That for the most part, most of the things that are imaginable there are problematic in their own way. So.
The only, it depends on what you choose, on what grounds you decide if you're going to do a moratorium, you're going to issue the moratorium on. I mean, I mean, if it's to look at, for example, public safety, you could wrap that into it because it falls under that umbrella. If it was for other reason that you come with.
Well, no, if we were to freeze that location, that means another however long that moratorium is, where the tax value of that property is now significantly reduced to us and the school district. And is it, is it a game changer? No, but it was one of the biggest taxpayers in the village and now isn't. So.
Well, I mean, I guess, you guys could correct me if I'm wrong, but a moratorium doesn't prevent you from okaying development. It just means they have to come to you and get it okayed. So.
A waiver process. I mean, the interesting piece about that particular site is the market has certainly not as yet proven that there is an as-of-right user who wants that right. And that doesn't never say never. That could materialize tomorrow. But by the same token, it's been quite a while. And that would suggest that the odds are, without any certainty, that a zoning change would be required. So that zoning change is within our capacity to accept or reject through a well-understood and extended process. Yeah. So there you have it, right?
It's a tough one. Yeah.
I want Hyrum Edward Mandville to be resuscitated from the dead. Sorry.
You asked a lot of questions, so I don't know if I remember them all, but I'll try to quickly respond from my perspective to them. Starting with this last, this last talk of the moratorium, one of the concerns about or legal concerns is that if it looks like we are targeting specific private property owners and not others, then we could apply to a lawsuit. And with only a few large property owners, the danger of that being the appearance or the reality is higher, right? If there's only two or three players involved. So that's something we have to consider as well, because according to the case law has developed, the burden has to be substantially shared. It can't, you know, it can't just be up for one small one owner, certainly not, or a small number of owners. Back to your first question. Again, these are just private conversations, but we're all having them. And I would answer your question was, are we getting different feedback than we heard at the town hall? And I am. I would say absolutely, I've received different feedback. Specifically, I reached out to people who grew up in Pleasantville who didn't talk at the town hall, but who were there. And I was curious why they didn't talk and what they would have to say. And there were three people who all grew up here, and and they all said they prefer the town now than when they grew up here. So that's important evidence, right? That it's not a unified sense that people who grew up here think it's a decline. Right? And they name specific blocks that they think are better, specific restaurants, specific stores, specific, you know, buildings even. So that's, you know, those are important voices for me to hear and for us to consider when we're talking about the four-hundred-year story of this place that has gone through lots and lots of changes, including moving its town center, including burying a train track, including the invention of a car.
Yeah, I mean, look, there are certainly people that would argue till they're blue in the face that we're in a decline. I'm not that, I'm not arguing. I mean, my argument is, I don't know. There's a lot going on that could be a decline in the livability of this village. And that's my, that's my concern, which is why I think we need to pause.
So one of the reasons I wanted to do my handout with bullet points is because I'm trying to get people who feel like something is off. Trying to get them to point which thing is most off in your mind. You know, is it aesthetics? Is it traffic? Is it just sheer density? Is it, what is it? Is it concern about tree coverage and the built environment?
All of the above, probably.
Well, for some people, it's all of the above. For some people, it's quite specific. And they say, you know, actually, I'm okay with that part, but this other part bothered me. It helps us to be more specific in our addressing of their concerns, the more specific they can be. So you know, all that is to say, I am getting some feedback, I'm getting, most of the feedback I get is mixed, but is positive. You know, I hear a lot of people, if there's a median position, Jonathan, I've heard, the median position is probably a nervous about the big new buildings. But I'm willing to wait and see what happens. But if you put two more big new buildings right now, I'm against it. Right. That's probably the median position I've heard, which I think is I think is reasonable.
Well, consider you can't do anything about the new buildings. They're right. They've got big buildings right now.
Well, but even that, there's openness that how they're going to be positive, right? The vibrancy. Because when we look at the nineteen ninety-five master plan, which is the one that I've read in the most detail, you know, the western block of Memorial Plaza, they want change. They use, one of the words there is confusing. They said, it's a confusing block. You know, it's, we don't really know what it's doing, and it's in the center of town. Right? And so there was a call, now maybe, maybe twenty years from now, we'll look back and say the boards were wrong. You know, it's worse. But they were definitely calling for something to be done with with the town whose town center was a parking lot and a confusing block that didn't really integrate in terms of commerce or pedestrian activity. So I feel as someone who didn't live here, but is reading the plan that they that we are, that this board, and especially the boards for the ten years before, were responding to to a master plan. And a master plan that included the redevelopment of the parking lot as well. All the way back to two thousand seven was the first discussion of redeveloping the north end of the parking lot. So I'm getting a bit off course here, but I just wanted to answer your questions from my perspective of what I'm hearing, which I think is, I'm hearing from people in my, I guess, social circle, age bracket, whatever it is, general positivity about the vibrancy of the center combined with concern about pace.
Yeah, I think your comment of like, I don't know, in a certain way, kind of sums it up, right? Like, I think the overarching theme about anxiety is, you know, it feels like it's happening too fast, and we don't know exactly where it's going, right? And I think that each of us might have a different, or everyone who shares that feeling might have a different version of that. I think probably all of us on that board also have a version of like, whoa, it feels like it's happening fast. That's why, I mean, the dynamic in that meeting in some ways was strange, I think, for us, in that it felt like we were like two you know, opposing sides in a certain way, but but really, like, this is, we're experiencing this too, right? Like, we're all experiencing this, like, whoa, this is, there's a lot happening really fast here.
It isn't like you have the capacity to say, no, we don't want that to happen other than changing the zoning. In many cases, what's happening is zoning that we didn't change. It's zoning that existed for a long, long time.
Right. And look, the that that, that, that uh, dynamic that you felt is not unusual.
No, no, of course we.
Because, because the vast majority of people don't understand and don't pay attention. They would understand if they paid attention, but don't really pay attention, right? And so they, they, it builds up just like the person kicking your seat in an airplane, right? And like, yeah, door, you endure it, and then you just turn around and say, cut it out. Um, and, and I think that that's kind of to the degree, although I thought most of the presenters were very polite. Uh, I, I, I've been in meetings where there has, they have not been polite. Uh, um, and I thought it was a fairly constructive meeting as far as those types of meetings go. I, I think the uh, I think the, the main takeaway from that meeting, if I were to, is what do you guys take away from it? And that's in part what people are trying to listen tonight and hear, hear what your takeaway was on that. Um, and uh, uh, because you know, the, I think the, the sale of the lane lot took people by surprise. Um, they didn't know that that was on even in their consideration. Um, and that uh, it was just an, you know, I wouldn't go so far as to say, as, as one of the, the presenters had a slap in the face, but I think that um, you know, if, if I were to summarize the group of people that I know that talk to me, which uh, is that it was we're throwing gasoline on the fire with that. Why are we doing that?
I, I get that. So here's, here's why we, we presented it publicly at our Monday meeting before the Wednesday meeting. Because we wanted folks to know that this had been uh, uh, on the radar screen and that this was in a serious discussion. That would have been unreasonable for us to have deprived people of that knowledge. Right? We're not trying to slap anybody in the face. So, you, you know, I mean, absolutely the opposite. That said, the idea of selling that property for this purpose obviously delivered a number of benefits. We get back essentially what we paid for it. We retain forty eight, out of the forty eight parking spaces. It's a little bit like selling the house, but still we're living in it. Uh, we, we protect it from being residential at any point in the future and make it uh, office only. Uh, and um, you, you left the board before our twenty seventeen master plan update that changed the zoning in that block to four stories from three. Uh, and the reason we changed it, I think you know, was uh, that, that site was essentially not economically redevelopable. Uh, unless we said, go ahead and build what you want without building parking, because you needed that mega big investment. So um, this piece of selling the lane lot comes at a certainly a problematic time from the standpoint of of where it plays into the whole community discussion. But it, it, it is separate from all of that. And don't misunderstand me, we're, we've got that on pause at the moment. But it is a, a, a very logical outgrowth of that twenty seventeen plan and which has emerged out of of a, I think, pretty painstaking effort to, to fulfill that and to fulfill it in a way that makes sense for the community. Um, doesn't feel that way at the moment when all this stuff is, is rolling out. It would obviously feel very different if we didn't have these other projects that arisen.
No doubt.
And Baker New York sell their property all of this. So that's obviously part of the context and that the the pandemic and emergence from it, you know, all these things fly together. So.
And, 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 and I'll leave by this. I think Paul's thought, and, and I think each one of you know, um, the, the idea of making these agenda items that the community actually cares about. And I, I, and I, and I, and I know that can be somewhat subjective, but, but I think you guys know the hot button topics. Um, making them more public uh, will, would, would, would ease the um, some of the sort of uh, kicking of the chair that happens. Uh, and then you guys hear more harsh feedback than you, than you intended. Cause uh, you know, the fact that, for example, the agenda item that this was a debrief, that, that was not, nobody made that public. I know Michael and David both said in different posts on social media that you guys are going to tick it up at the next meeting. Um, but you know, I, I think that you, you, you would be well served by taking Paul's suggestion. Or maybe it's the board suggestion that Paul's just voicing, by, by, by really taking advantage of knowing what, where the community hot buttons are. And making sure that the community is absolutely aware of that, more than just a noticed agenda item uh, buried in a a Wednesday or Thursday or Friday afternoon post. Um.
So that, that, that's a, a reasonable thought. We have a Facebook page and obviously.
Put it there, absolutely.
And then folks can.
We do generally. I think, I think that this particular issue that you're right, could have been um, put more upfront, but that's part of the reason we, we talked about it in the meeting. And I think it was a little bit awkward having it in the context of that meeting, but obviously we wanted to make it public. Um, so your point is well taken, but I, I do think that most of the time when we have something that we know people are going to be interested in, it's on our Facebook page and you know, often.
I mean, the agendas are always posted on Facebook.
Well, the, 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 the link to the agendas are, but not, not the actual agenda, highlighting a particular agenda item.
Let me just say, highlight, go, go ahead.
Well, I just, I, I wanna, I wanna push back on the, the metaphor of buried. You said something, you said something was buried in an agenda. And I just, I, I, I struggle with this because um, we're all doing citizen governance here. And that does rely to some degree on if citizens are concerned to click on the link and read the, read the agenda item, you know? We can't, and, and there's a subjectivity in all this because, I mean, we do a lot of police promotions. Do we, do we put all those on social media? We do, we, we do budget season. How many meetings a week do we have for budget season? You know, how many, you were on, you did those, right? So it, it, it's difficult for us to know which uh, which things everybody wants to know about all the time.
Um, Michael, Michael, I, 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 I'm not gonna, I, I, I agree with you, uh, 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 about eighty-five percent of what you're saying. I, I think you do know. And if you don't know what the hot button items are for the community to highlight, there was a problem there. I mean, you, you, you responded to uh, people. And thank you for responding to people's social media questions about when, when that feedback's going to happen. So did David.
Right.
So you, you, every one of you I know had a sensitivity that the community is intensely interested in this particular topic. So not to highlight it and, and say, oh, well, I'm sorry, you know, it's, it's policing, you know, individual. I agree. I, I look at the, I look at them, you know, but anyways, it's just a suggestion. Do with it what you want. But it's, it's, I'm, I'm only, I'm only saying that Paul's idea, I think is a good one, has some merit to creating a greater sense of community communication between the board and the community. That's all.
So on, uh, just one last, one, one last thought on this. Um, I learned about four forty-four Bedford the same moment that everyone else did.
Now, I believe that.
But it's not before this board.
It's not before our board and it's not as.
I'm not talking about four forty.
No, my point about that is people misunderstand that.
I bring it up because it was clearly the tipping point in the, the conversation. That the, the image of.
Well, that, yeah, okay. I, I, I give you that.
My point about transparency is that I was walking down the street and my phone started buzzing and people like, what the heck is going on with this? And I didn't even know what they were talking about.
And, 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 and that's completely legit.
Private property owner who, who sends a document to, to the town and then it went to a public agenda. So um, right. So, so I, I, I agree in principle about transparency, of course. And I, I want the town to believe that we, from our perspective, we believe we are trying to be transparent and, and put everything out there in as many forms, including everyone high on Zoom. Everyone who's here right now, virtually, in addition to all of the, all the digital ways that we're engaging with them. Um, so I agree in principle, but there are, there are challenges to getting it all out there.
Yeah. And I guess it's just a little bit frustrating. So compared to when you were on the board, for example, we, I think we've done a lot that way. And we, you know, we put out more and more, but you know, people do have some responsibility to, to, to tune in if they're, you know, interested. And, and that particular case, you know, maybe we should have had a separate post or something like that. I, I take that, but.
Well, let me, I am more than happy and I have done so in the past emailing you guys saying, uh, guys, this is a, I know the community is really, really interested in this. You, you do yourself a service by making them aware, making, put out a post uh, on your Facebook page, making people aware that you're selling the lane lot and that discussion's going to happen on Monday night.
Uh, so we're not selling the lane lot. We're talking about selling.
Talking about selling the lane lot.
Words matter. Come on. Um, let me just say two things about that and then maybe we should give.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
If they want to.
Um, I'm way past my three minutes.
I, I was going to say, uh, it's uh, we're, we're the kind of guys, as you well know, having sat next to me for some years. I'll stay here as long as you want to talk, which is perhaps a bad choice, but there you have it. That's the horse I ride.
I don't disagree.
Okay. Um, I just want to say, obviously posting agendas, we, we, you know, first off, remind folks that they can have them emailed to their inbox automatically, left column and Pleasantville dash NY dot com, subscribe to news, choose what you want. Um, you then get the whole agenda and can see exactly what it is. We also post a link to, to uh, Facebook. One of the reasons we post a link is that occasionally agenda items are added. And anytime you go to it, you click the link and you're seeing the current version. That's the beauty of having the online agenda system. And then the last thing I wanted to say about that is, is uh, you know, one person's transparency is another person's advocacy. We've gotten, and, and other boards have gotten uh, flak on some occasions for having highlighted an item that was perceived uh, by, by perhaps an applicant as an effort to gin up opposition to that. When they are following the rules, they're applying as they normally would. And when their item is blasted out to the community, hey, you ought to know this is going on, that feels different when, when other proposals don't get that. So um, I don't, I don't bring that up in any way other than to say, as, as, as you well know, uh, the five of us spend more of our lives trying to fulfill our responsibilities than perhaps any of us imagined when we got into it. I, I certainly can count myself in that category. But uh, the, the, the full administrative uh, bench is right here. Uh, it's not like we have a, a crowd, a crowd of people who can do this. And I can tell you, it certainly happens to me, but it happens to Eric and Alyssa every day that, you know, some chunk of their day is whoa, I thought I knew what I was doing today. I'm doing something else. So um, if there's anything good about the fact that uh, we're not perfect, it's that we run pretty lean mean and I think we have pretty good people doing it. So but we will certainly.
And, and we can have discussions.
You can get better every day.
You know, um, honestly, uh, which is, which is healthy.
Yeah, no, I think.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else have something they wanted to add to this mix well?
You're welcome, Elijah. Forty-four Hazel. I wanted to thank all of you guys for the opportunity that we had to speak and have the town come out because I thought that that meeting was really effective. Um, something that crossed my mind as you were talking, probably something you don't want to explore, but I've used in my professional background a lot is Survey Monkey. If you feel like there are people whose opinions are not being expressed, um, or they feel intimidated by general consensus, don't open it for comments, but see what their responses are. Um, you're beholden to those though, if you open it. So I guess perceive a caution. Um, I was so glad to hear the discussion. My, I am in the median camp of, I think that Pleasantville has, has increased in vibrancy. It's fun to see that you can't find parking to get to a restaurant in a Parkway field on a Friday night. That's not as sleepy and boring as the town that I grew up in. But I do think um, in everyone's favorite movie sequel, Too Fast Too Furious, the development pace is a little alarming. And the speed at which we've seen the buildings erupted. So unfortunately, in that context, when Cooley Street was presented, I think that there was kind of a, a, a a guttural reaction by many residents, but like, let's, let's slow this down. So I'm very pleased to hear you're willing to put a pause and explore that. I'd love to understand more about where you were or are in that process, what a pause looks like, um, and then what maybe future timing and consideration would look like on that.
So I, I, I say, with full honesty, I'm not sure, and I'm not sure any of us are sure, other than we are sure that um, we need to respond to, to our own views of all of this and all of your views about all of this. And that's what we got elected to do. And, and so we, I'm not sure uh, where that will lead, other than to say, we're certainly going to give it the time to make sure that uh, A, we get to a thoughtful response and B, folks understand how we got to. So um, I'm not sure exactly what that roadmap will look like. Certainly at the moment, and I offer this to you and I will follow up now that we're past the Thanksgiving weekend um, to come visit with whoever, because those are settings in which we all get a better sense of what people's concerns are and, and vice versa. So.
Yeah.
What I would certainly say about that is, again, speaking for myself, that, that, the uh, blessings and burdens of, of my job are that all of these issues, pros and cons are mixed together and, and, and for every action, there's an equal and opposite reaction. I mean, for tonight, the concern about, about uh, unintended consequences from a moratorium. I, I, I'm pretty confident that with our planning advisors, we can navigate to a reasonable way uh, to get to that. But you know, it's interesting, again, anecdotally, I would say most of what I've heard from people just in chatter uh, around town and, and to some extent the other night is traffic. And so one piece of that is, I think, trying to unpack what's causing the traffic problems. What options do we have to do anything about it? To what extent does X or Y or Z action help or hurt? And I think one of the points that's clear about that is we're going to dig up some of the data that exists and the DOT recently did some traffic counts in various places. You're going to get that data. Clearly, I think going forward, we need a little more robust analytical piece to that so that we can say, well, here's what we knew in this year and here's what we knew the next year and the year after that. Just, I think that will assist us in long-term planning and, and future boards. But I don't know quite what the answer is, other than we're certainly going to be uh, engaging folks, going to have another meeting. I think we're you one who said eight o'clock was a better time.
Yeah.
Uh, or even eight thirty, you, you tell me. So.
No, eight's great. The kids are asleep by eight. So.
All right. I was going to say, my kids are now young adults, but.
I wanted to touch on, yeah, the, the traffic, um, the part that, I, I think you guys did a great job summarizing key takeaways. But two things I did want to highlight from our last meeting that stood out for me that you might consider is the bifurcation of the village. And what the downtown traffic situations have done in creating kind of, and, and it existed actually, if you read the history, um, when the railroad came in, it was old village versus new village. But, but now if you are beyond kind of our downtown, it does emotionally feel not unified and part of, and difficult to participate in. Or if you were beyond walking distance.
Mountain West or uh.
Yes, exactly. Because of that. So I don't, I don't know what the solution is, but that is something that exists out there. And then we talk about traffic and we've talked about public safety and we've talked about these things, but all of those things are important, right? I do want to say in, and navigate this definitely. I think another consensus among mothers that I've spoken to is that there isn't an inherent safety in small villages. Um, and I know that this was broadcast. I now lock my car and don't leave my wallet in it. But for many years, my, my keys were in the engine in the driveway, right? Um, and there's a high level of trust in knowing when your children are walking to town, that people that you know will see them or keep their eyes out for them, that it's a safe environment for them. And I, I think in bringing in office buildings and hundreds of new apartments, it changes the um, free range parenting that, that some of us like to enjoy in the safety of a small town. And so while all of this new development has been great, I think that we should, should wait and see what it looks like downtown, what the environment is, who's coming in. Um.
Can you talk a little bit more about your fears about renters in particular?
Renters in particular, it's more like bicycle safety. Like I, like, I grew up riding my bike around and I'd love for my kids to be able to ride their bikes around. But um, when there are so many cars coming and going in a spot, it's like, I don't know that my kids have the street knowledge to navigate a parking lot with vehicles constantly coming and going. Or if the congestion downtown is a certain way, even just kind of the, the walking safety. I see middle schoolers all the time and our sidewalks are narrow and they've got a kid off the curve on Bedford Road. And maybe thirty years ago, when people were driving twenty miles an hour, that was okay. But when people are, are trying to get through and it's more congested and they've been sitting in traffic and they're frustrated, that's not the same.
Yeah, because I also have three small children or three children, one small.
Yeah.
Um, and I perceive actually the people who don't live in the center of the village. And I don't see like thirty-nine Washington. Those people are not making me fear for my children's life. It's actually people who live further out like I do, live in the village, but not those who are driving three times a day or four times a day. They're creating the traffic concern for that. And not, like, I, I get what you're saying.
Like a parking lot with, if you have a, if you have a building with a hundred new, or seventy, and there's residents coming and going.
But they're not, they're not coming and going in the village. They're coming into the village and unleaving the village. Whereas the rest of us, if, you know, either if we live further out if, you know, either if we live further out, or if we're lived midways and one, ten or twenty years ago, we were locked everywhere, but now we're driving some of the time. We're actually driving into and out of the village more times than anybody who actually lived in the center with.
Absolutely. I'm just saying, if you take a hundred apartments and one car each in a downtown area and those people are coming and going each twice a day, that's two hundred more cars for, for navigating, right?
So, just a little shout out related, but unrelated, um, I hope folks have seen the, the new sidewalk uh, that has been created between Tompkins and, and uh, uh, Wheeler uh, on the Burnside and, and come, and in a few other places we've got to before the uh, end of the concrete season. Next spring, we're gonna continue that and that same treatment will exist on both sides, all the way to the grant to, to uh, Tompkins. And one of the things we've done is bumped out the uh, sidewalks. So they're both wider sidewalks. Now that they bump out at the crosswalks, the crosswalks are gonna be straight instead of this wacky handle that we've had for years. And it's gonna take what once felt like literally you're crossing five, almost six lanes of traffic to get from one side of Washington to the other and really narrow those crosswalks. So, I, I, I personally think it's a game changer. It's a great step forward to pedestrian safety, but I would say I get a lot of flack about it. Oh my God, you know, we need more lanes of traffic. Well, it can't happen both ways. We want what you want, which is the capacity for kids to be out and around, for adults to be out and around, people of any age to feel comfortable as pedestrians. And obviously that, you know, there's a lot of important talk about how we can get these traffic lights signalized, uh, synchronized better. But um, I, I do think fully understand your point, but we, we've got a bunch of pretty positive changes going on here. Just saw a hundred thousand dollar event for him. Lighting crosswalk, a prototype uh, with the assistance of the county and our pedestrian safety committee. So.
So Nicole, though, I do wanna follow up and make sure that we're understanding all of your concerns. And you, you just said, the traffic, you know, traffic safety for your children is a concern. Um, are there other concerns that you have for your children? Cause you were saying with, with uh, new residents coming into town?
Uh, no, it's more of, it's not, it's not just this idea of like, let's fix the parking situation and it's better, or let's um, bulk up our emergency response services and it's better. Just this idea of um, what happens to a, a small community when the population increases by five percent? And what does that look like? Um, and I think that that more than just solving for kind of disparate concerns that residents may have brought up.
Yeah, I, I, I'm more curious, what's your fear? Like, what's the worst case scenario for you that?
Oh, I don't know. I don't have a worst case scenario. My, I just come from a more conservative per- personal perspective. I'm like, let's see how this unfolds before we create a four-story office building or or allow for, not, not that you are allowing for more development, but that this is pursued in our downtown, right? My concern is that we don't know and I don't want to lose the unintended consequences. I don't wanna lose the positive aspects of kids milling and going and it's as a, a fine environment that we don't have to worry about traffic or accidents or those types of things.
So is it just traffic? I just, I just wanna understand the positive things that you wanna keep that you're afraid.
Yeah, I, I think the, I think the safety in not having it be a thoroughfare, a major thoroughfare. There was a, um, I think that some of the sleepiness that people adjust to grew up here was boring and, and closed down at seven P M. And there wasn't a lot going on and, and gotten more vibrant and exciting. But I do think that you worry less in the sleepiness of, of what could happen.
Yeah, I wanna.
My experience is that less there teenagers you worry.
Try to bite to school. I don't really feel about it. I have a nine and a five, a six-year-old.
It is kind of a paradox though, because I think, so I, I was involved in the creation of the pedestrian committee and I've been a lead on the pedestrian committee since I it's created and, um, you know, um, what you really don't want for, for pedestrian safety is a bunch of cars going quickly, right? Like, you don't want the thoroughfare, right? And so, on the one hand, people don't like traffic and they don't like waiting, but you don't wanna, uh, on the other hand, create a situation where cars are moving through. Quickly, right? So for example, like traffic coming.
Yeah, in the old village, the, um, I don't know the name of the gas station, but I've been to it a million times, right on the corner.
Yeah.
Right across from Don Juan. That sidewalk is incredibly narrow. The curb is worn down.
Yeah.
It's a blind corner. I think it's elderly residents and the maintenance there of the shrubbery, sometimes it's hard to see and cars fly through that ledge.
Right, right.
If your kid is on a scooter coming through there and you've got the traffic pulling out of the gas station, it's a little worrisome.
No, more than, more than.
Yeah.
It's the most dangerous spot in town. Exactly stripped, right? I mean.
That every day is.
Just in the most dangerous category, just public service announcement, the highest accident intersection in the entire village is Bedford and Tompkins by Holy Isms.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, cuz it's a tough spot there.
Yeah, yes. Yeah.
I mean, I wanna connect with the pedestrian.
Yeah, you should really get on.
They have been great, like they're one of, you know, we, we all serve with different committees and you know, they're all volunteers and it's a difficult thing to do. And you see some committees are more effective than others. They are lean and mean, like they really, they get stuff done and they're, they're, you know, considering all the angles. So if you have any spare time, I would connect with them and kind of see what they're doing, cuz I, I think that's a very important piece. And I agree, like I, I have a fourteen-year-old who now, we live close enough to the center of town, but like, he can be anywhere, you know what I mean? And so I totally relate, you know, to those concerns. Um, yeah, and it's complex.
And you wanted to have that freedom. That's what they, that's what kids need.
It's a wonderful thing. Yeah.
It's, I don't really want.
As, as long as we're, as long as we're getting very specific, very specific, I think one of the concerns you're helping me see very laser focused, laser focus is, uh, so my, my youngest, I would not let walk, I would let walk in a different context, right? In the free-range parenting, while you're saying, but I, I wouldn't because of that exact spot in the old village. But also I hear a lot about for my own children, but also from others about getting, like getting to Carvel.
Yeah.
As if, you know, uh, uh, from their perspective, as if it's like, we are going, we're going through a very difficult experience. Like get from, get to Carvel because of those few intersections.
Yeah.
And so it helps me see how, you know, Cooley Street two-way is going to provide benefits, no doubt. While Cooley Street two-way is also going to mean that, that, that spot will be more challenging for, for kids, right? For kids who are trying to get to a place they very much wanna go to their ice cream on the other, on the other side of that.
Consequences, right?
It's unintended consequence, but it also, it's so helpful for, because there are things we can do at that spot, right? We can, we can then with the pedestrian committee and with the police and with everybody kind of focus on what are we gonna do for this, this new one block, really? That's gonna have a lot more happening at it.
Further public uh, safety announcement.
So thank you.
When you, when you, when you come towards Bedford Don Cooley Street now, it's right turn only. And it will be right turn only when it's a full two-way street. And I routinely see people violate that, which is frustrating. Maybe we need to account.
Yeah.
Can you go straight there, by the way? Is it right turn only or can you frustrate it, bro?
It's intended to be right turn only.
It doesn't.
Good question. I've, I've asked myself that.
Um, out of curiosity, one more question. Do you know what they're asking for the Bank of New York property?
It's not for sale. It's the current owner that is proposing this development.
Oh, oh.
They've owned it for forty-five years.
Yeah, okay.
With the bank of New York?
Well, I'm sorry. Yeah, oh, right. Uh, so, so various numbers have been presented and there are a few different pieces that might be included in, again, purely anecdotal. Uh, Don Carey owns the piece that was bought from the Bank of New York. Um, and uh, at the top of the hill is the Savin Engineering Building. That is still owned by Savin Engineering. My understanding, purely anecdotal, is that the Savin Engineering folks have said, we're open to an offer, but it's not necessarily on the market. Um, and so it's not clear how that might all work out. So I hesitate to mention a number, but it's, it's many millions, so.
Something feels like for a sand making into a park. All right, thank you.
Thank you. So, I will, I'll, I'll, I'll reach out to you as I promised I would. Further comment from anybody on any subject?
Um, I guess I'll speak.
Welcome.
Sorry, I'm very tired. Hi, how are you? I'm sure you're all tired too. Um, I was at the last meeting and.
Name and address for the record, if you would.
Yes, Christine, Ivina, one forty Fochette.
Hello.
Hi, hi. Um, let me just first say about what one of Noel's comments with safety. I mean, it's not even just kids. I live by pace coming into the town and there's a crosswalk right over the overpass. Um, I've seen adults like people with strollers almost get hit because it's just, there is a crosswalk and I'm so happy that there is one cuz there used to not be one, but um, it still doesn't seem to be preventing cars from going really fast. Um, and also, I mean, that's not where I live, but the people across from the condominiums there right before Locust, I mean, they don't have a crosswalk to get to the other side where there's a sidewalk. You know, there's that portion.
Yes.
I mean, that's just, you know, another, um, just kind of note about that. Um, the other thing was, um, I know I keep saying this and it's, you know, I really would love a pause on development. It's not that I don't like the town as it is and you know, there's some parts that I wish, you know, it is sad to see things getting so developed. Um, that's just my point of view, but I don't think that it's a bad place to live. Um, but at the same time, while, while I say that it's not a bad place to live, like what you were saying, um, I think that I'm scared for the future and what it's gonna look like being so developed. So I think like when you say people are telling you, oh, I'm, you know, I like the town, I like it. I think you have to kind of closely put with it that they're also scared of where it's going, at the pace that it's going. Um, so I am very interested in hearing more about the possible pause in a moratorium, if it's possible. And um, you know, finding updates on that. The other thing that I know I've talked about before is um, about uh, a recreation center for Pleasantville. Um, and at the last meeting, a lot of residents came up to me and said, you know, what about starting uh, our own committee? Um, and fundraising, um, you know, I don't know, I don't, I don't know how you all feel about that or, or if it's possible. I mean, I know there were people, I'm just looking back, Noah, um, wanting to do like a GoFundMe, right? To possibly purchase some of these buildings themselves, like residents wanted to start, um, something like that. So I was just wondering what your thoughts on it.
Peter, who owns the spot behind, um, so across from Hankles? There's uh, like a tree service or something. There's a, another commercial building. Then behind that, between that and the sawmill, um, there's sort of a scrub land. Who owns that? You know?
Castleton Street?
Yeah, next to the village.
Prospero, yeah. It's a, it's a, a modeling equipment company and there are many slavers of Prospero.
The open uh, land there though?
I, I'm not aware of their.
So like on, on, where Hankles is, as you're driving by them, not, if you go straight, you'll be.
Oh, oh, I know what you mean. That, that, uh, on Marvel Avenue.
Yeah.
So that parcel years ago, uh, was a uh, used furniture place. Uh, that building was torn down and I believe that it is owned by Prospero. Uh, they at one point had a development plan on Marvel Avenue that incorporated the building they own at the corner that I think is now currently empty, but it's offered for a lease and they own the next lease.
Yeah, because what I was gonna say to you, Christine, uh, Christine, sorry, is um, I know from my day job that um, renovation is much more expensive than putting something up, especially a simple structure. So, if you want to explore it, you know, look for uh, a, a vacant piece of land in light industrial or someplace where, you know, I mean, we already have people going, bringing their dancers and all that along those streets. That would be probably the least expensive way to get the village rec space.
Mm-hmm.
So, let me say, not, not everybody's idea of a rec center is the same. There's one group that is looking for athletic space, a gym.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, and uh, others are interested in after-school kinds of spaces for kids or drop-in spaces for teens or places for clubs and groups to gather.
Mm-hmm.
Others, kind of all of the above, right?
Mm-hmm.
So, um, the, the reality for us is we've got a, a bunch of major expenses coming down the pipe, one of which is the pool.
Mm-hmm.
And uh, it, it is pretty hard to imagine how we could find enough money
Mm-hmm.
to do that. So I am totally open to a group of people getting together and, and, and uh, brainstorming about how that could be done.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but we're, you know, the Girl Scout building was, was one example.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, about ten million dollars and then probably a million dollars a year in operating expenses. Um, one of the problems we have in all of that is that's borne by the village taxpayer, folks like you who are in the school district but aren't in the village, uh, wouldn't be captured by that. And maybe there's some sort of a fee structure or something like that that could address that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but it's, it's, uh, I, I don't, I don't honestly see a realistic way forward for that in the near future.
Mm-hmm.
But I don't mean to say never, say never. We should all talk.
Sorry, do you mean in a committee or having a recreation?
I, if, if a group wanna get together and, and brainstorm about that, that would be great.
If you think that you can.
I personally can, but I do understand who you're talking about, the different groups, and I know the people and I think we're all on the same page. Like, we really are dying to get another space for our kids for just a number of different things, which would really be an awesome part of Pleasantville.
Okay, I, I agree with you.
Mm-hmm.
The piece of that, and we certainly went through this in the community discussion about the pool. There's a program we've always had, has existed for many, many generations and I think is an important piece of kids growing up here. Uh, and, and um, we talked to the community, had a survey, many different comments. A lot of comments, both through the survey and, and anecdotally work, I really, really, really want you, want that pool to be a viable option for us forever. We, whatever two parents running as fast as they can to make it possible to live here and bring our kids up here, we can't pay more uh, e- either in, in the registration fee or in taxes. So, um, other people say, whatever, if the taxes went up fifteen percent, it's okay with me if I could get X, Y, or Z thing I want. So there's that piece of it too, right?
Mm-hmm. Well, I know, but I got people leave that for the community to see and vote on. I mean, and I just feel like a space, um, a rec center, I mean, I don't know, I guess you would buy a, get a bond and kind of pay it off like a mortgage, you know?
You would. Again, at a community our size, we, we can't uh, get too far out on the board in terms of our indebtedness. And we have a few things coming down the pipe, including
Mm-hmm.
as I mentioned, the pool, but um, one of the big things on the radar is at some point we're gonna have to replace the water tanks, which are way up, way up, no, they're way, the ones that provide drinking water for all of us are way up the hill and that's a big, 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 big project. I mean, we know it's coming and it's some years down the pipe, but ten millionish, maybe something like that, really big to do. So when you divide that across a, a community of less than three thousand taxpayers, you, you could have a big effect real fast.
Is that why the town is though looking to develop a lot of the land and sell it?
Well.
And you're in so much debt.
It's not that we're looking, I mean, we're not looking to develop. Goes that way, the lane lot. Other than that, you know, as we explained at the meeting, the only thing that the village board has done to impact development of this all is the zoning change that was made to the one block um, that Starbucks is on, right?
Mm-hmm.
Other than that, it's really more outside forces that are changing the dynamics of.
Right. But I don't, I don't wanna discourage you because looking at other communities in the Midwest in, in uh, in Oregon, whatever, I've seen communities that have you know, arguably a lower median income than Pleasantville that have done successful fundraising and built a library, built a community center, et cetera. There's nothing to say that you can't do that.
And we've seen it very, very frequently for athletic fields.
Yeah.
Done a lot. I mean, I don't know if I've looked in New York to death, but they've done a lot of.
I'm wearing this sweatshirt.
They have done great fundraising, but it, it, it isn't even approaching the scale of.
No, you, you need people.
Six-figure checks. And, and I don't know whether there are such people, but that would, I mean. All right, lock the door, no one can get in here until we have a committee.
But al- but also Chris, I mean, the, the, the uh, you know, Parks and Rec folks would have lots of thoughts on this too, I would think, right? The Parks and Rec Committee.
Well, that's where I'm looking for the connection. That's why I was asking you, um, like for that connection. Not that I really wanna fear of this.
Yeah.
I'm a little busy myself, I know everyone is, but um, as a group, you know, but that's where I was looking for your.
So, yeah, I mean, so the realities of, of, of the budget season um, are that. Parks and Rec Superintendent presents a proposed budget for the year and we all look at it and discuss it and the numbers that we're working with are things like. Uh, can we, uh, should we use money to put in new fencing on this field? Should we use new fu- funding to put in new pavement on this basketball court? So it feels like they're much, they're small to medium sized projects that we're always doing, just, just the maintenance projects. And, and even those we debate, uh, even they come up and say, well, well, let's pause that one, that. That fifty thousand dollars, let's not spend right now or on that thing. So in thinking about, uh, you know, a multi-million dollar project when, when that's the reality of the budget.
Right.
Budget numbers we work with, it feels um.
It feels out of reach, but I mean, again, that's why. That's just my voice as a resident, as a mom of three kids, as you know, kids who love playing sports, we love enrichment activities. Just to keep in your mind when we are taking up all of these li- this land that. Could possibly be used for that, like. Even though it's a far stretch and a reach, let's kind of keep that in mind that we should be thinking about a space to save. For the community, for everyone in the community, you know, from kids to adults.
So I guess. Here, it's helping me here. When, when I look at what the, what the town owns, what the village owns. Or the, that are our shared community spaces. The, the, the three schools, the senior center and the pool and the fields feel like. Where people gather, you know, for, you know. Besides restaurants, right? And it feels like, well, what, what happens there? And with, with the library getting its renovation upcoming.
That's another expense, you know, it hasn't been committed to yet, but is on the radar.
Yeah, so it, it seems um. It, it was my sense of the village when I joined that the pool was the number one thing. When people are thinking about rec, rec center, right, or recreational spot.
We had to do something.
But we had, because we had to do something and, and a number of times people said to me. Uh, a no- a nice community pool seems like the bare minimum for what I pay in taxes. I feel like people said the same sentence. To me all the time, right? And that they, they look, and so that. I heard that loud and clear that that was the, the big, next big ticket item. And so big ticket item beyond the pool, I don't think any of us know what.
No.
Cause that, that's still a few years out.
What you're saying, I think, is that you see these buildings going up and you want there to be also. Open space and commu- and communal space, right? So that can mean different things for different people. So for me, you know, when I'm thinking about what the village owns and thinking long term, honestly, one of the things I'm thinking about is the parking lot. Um, and we have this project, we have a beautiful design for it. Also, another thing that will require money to create a, a, a park at the north end of Memorial Plaza. Um, and that, that's designed to be programmed. The whole idea behind it originally was that it was not just a passive park, but it was designed for recreational uses, you know? So that you could have, for instance, an ice skating rink in the wintertime that the kids could be on, things like that. So right now, obviously, but also looking really long term, you know? That is a space that I think it's really important for us to preserve, because right now we need. Those parking spots, you know, we still have commuters. But when you talk to people who are really interested in the future of mobility, they say eventually we're not even gonna own cars, right? Eventually what's gonna happen is that people will use services sort of analogous to what you Uber is today, but it'll be more sophisticated. And you know, people won't have their own, so you know, somewhere, you know, this is long beyond when I will be on the board, right? But um, you know, that, that is a, a space that could potentially be um, a, a public space. And I do think, although it's difficult financially, logistically, things like that, I think that your general point about. That there needs to be a balance, you know, between the, like privately owned space and, and this money and then investment coming in. And the public sphere, um, I, I completely agree with you on that, um. You know, the, the, the tricky thing is how that gets worked out. But I do think in terms of like having that on the horizon, having that as like a, as an important goal, I think is, is really.
Keep in the back of your mind, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, but, but we need these communal spaces. I mean, that's one of the reasons I think the pool is so important. When my kids were little, the BRS, um, uh, outdoor, you know, gathering space. Um, those spaces where everybody gathers, I mean, that's in a sense what makes Pleasantville pleasant, right? It's because people meet each other and they interact with each other and they, they have these ties, right? And they care for each other and it's because we have these public spaces. So in that sense, I, I completely agree with you. Um, that, that's an essential part of, of maintaining what Pleasant.
Right, and I mean, I think that's the whole, what this gentleman was speaking about, you know, in the. Papers from sixty years back, like keeping like it's communal, you know? Trying to preserve those and have that in our, you know, in our minds.
Yeah.
I mean, if, if, if you wanna put together a group to brainstorm about the recreation center idea will help you. Um, I guess kind of the first question would be. There, there's the money question, what, what might it cost if we could buy a piece of property? And then the second piece is where could it go? We certainly don't own any property that I think. Is anywhere near big enough to do it. Then of course, there's the part and requirement that, attached to all of that, so.
Um, well, I was starting to interrupt you, thinking the committee could kind of be like two parts, so one part is. Doing that planning and researching and looking, and another part is doing the fundraising. And while we're planning, looking and researching, we could be fundraising and, and accruing money towards our goal. You know?
I'm interested to know, David, from your background, I know that you spoke about library planning and different things. What's the number? What's the fundraising number of all part?
Well, I don't know for a rec center, so, so I, you know, if it were, if you were, and also uh. Or library really is dramatically. Different because of the number of spaces. I, I think that it's probably cheaper for rec center. So I hate, I don't wanna tell you like, you know, Scarsdale spent twenty million dollars renovating their library and they didn't do it all, but. It, it may be like five million or ten million, that's possible. So I don't, I can't really give you a number, but I do think. It's potentially a simpler building and a simpler structure.
Right, there's a lot of different ideas that I've talked to people where they have just very creative ideas. That's why I was thinking of a committee where everyone could come together.
Might be a very simple structure and I even have like a, 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 you know, a, a steel. Frame or whatever, but you know, that could be less expensive. So there, there, there are probably other, other possibilities.
Staffing aspect of the two, that's one like sprinkle, right? Because.
Yeah.
Um, if it were staffed by village employees. We would have to hire more people to do that and so that, you know, that's something that would like.
But I mean, there might be some revenue resources, I mean. Not, not suggesting that, you know, Mount Pleasant has a rec center. Uh, and, and, and it. Not to suggest that that is the prototype. Um, but it's, if, if that's the sort of scale of what you envision. Um, where could that go? But also recognize that they are able to achieve that with a tax base. Four or five times the tax base we have, so. Um, I mean, as I mentioned, I think in the context of that, you know, I, uh. Round figures, we have a hundred thousand dollars in additional expense and we raise your taxes one percent. So.
You are a resident of Mount Pleasant, to be clear. And if you assemble a committee and if you build a coalition for what you're doing. Then you have political pressure that you can apply to them, just like you apply to us. There's no reason they can't meet. The needs of the people who live near Pleasant, in or near Pleasantville with their own budget as well.
They're not gonna build a rec center in the.
Also like how we use their facility, I mean, I've gone to so many events.
I mean, we're all residents of the town.
Right, right.
Uh, but a- as is the case where you have these incorporated villages inside of town. You know, you, you can join the Mount Pleasant pool, you pay a higher rate than uh, the, the people who aren't in the incorporated villages because. Uh, of the fact that they pay more of the taxes that's important. Yeah, so, I mean, Da- David, if you should take a look at the Mount Pleasant Library website, it's a really fabulous, interesting plan there. Great improvement, without changing the footprint.
Right.
Um, but you know, s- just, s- same story, that. That, that the blessing and the curse of Pleasantville, more on the blessing side, I attribute you, is that all this stuff is stuck together, right? Schools and churches and, and the library and recreational facilities and parks and playing fields and. So the result of that is we get this congestion and people say, are you kidding? The library is right there, we can't have more people going there, too many people already, schools, da, 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 da. And yet, the library is a piece of every school kid's life, even if they're not. On a daily basis using it in, in ways that are really great, so, um.
You may need legally, you may need to, if you wanna do the two things. Um, the fundraising part may need to be a separate entity. Um, some, you know, you, you can learn the uh, uh, the legal.
Yeah.
It has probably to be a foundation, so you can.
Nonprofit.
But I will say that the, the last piece of that, and then we should probably move on and you should get back to your regular life is. It's difficult to raise money, especially if you're hoping people will provide a really significant amount of money for something that. Has no clear plan. It would be one thing if, if we were able to say, here's where it is. Here's roughly what it will cost, here's what we're raising money for, if the thermometer gets up to this point, we can kick off and do it. Um, I just, I, I.
It's not just my, my idea, I mean, lots of people, even after the meeting, a lot of people. And, and prior to the meeting have been saying.
Yes.
Something like this, like to preserve a community space, um, you know, and it could just be that. To preserve a community space, doesn't have to be a.
I mean, just to be clear, all the development that's going on i- is somebody else's property and they decided to do it. The one piece that we've been talking about, literally the only piece is, is the, the parking lot line up.
Right.
Post office, but all the rest of this, you know, in order to use it or, or in order to build a rec center, we have to buy it. First, take it off the tax rolls and then.
Right, 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 okay, yeah.
But interestingly enough, just to keep an idea, uh, just to keep it in mind, if we were to sell that lot. Wouldn't that, wouldn't that be some money that comes up? That, and we still get our parking spots back. So now, you know, it's, just think of it sometimes as, as, you know. You have your home, right? And if you're able to keep, you know, a part of it, but you can still live there rent free, but someone else is gonna give you more for it. Now can we use that money to something else?
Right.
So that, that's what makes it more difficult that like, okay, you know. We can, we can let it ride and just say, you know, this, this lot is gonna be valuable in the future. Maybe we get more in the future, maybe we don't, maybe, maybe later on someone just says, no, you know. I'll sell it, I'll buy you the little land, I'll buy the land, but I'm not giving you your parking spaces. And then we're sitting there. Now we could have easily had all this money, you know, we, we don't have the exact amount that it would be. That would be money that could be used for something like this. It could be used for other projects that we have. You know, in line that we're trying to go with for a community space, so that's why that, that, it's not as simple as. You know, don't just sell it and build it, but we could use that money to help those kind of causes, so that's what makes it a bit more difficult.
And we got a tax ratable, it's helping.
Right, but will that happen though? You know, like where's the guarantee?
Yeah, I think that it's a trade off.
Will the tax rate will happen in?
No, will, you know, building revenue for something like a community space.
Well, we wouldn't be able to build a rec center necessarily, but it would go towards probably. Rec related projects, you know, community projects.
Look, you have to start with a vision, not with resources, and so I applaud the idea. I, I will say, and I, I, I. Thought about a lot of this over a long period of time and you, you're, you know, there've been generations of people. With the same concern, especially the issue of another gym, because gym space is so difficult.
Right.
Uh, likely field space too, uh, you know, that, that um, it's. It's A, hard to imagine where it could go and B, hard to imagine how we could pay. So those are the two sort of startups.
Yeah, right.
If we could see over the top of the hill and say, well, it's imaginable they could go here and this property is owned by X person and they might be willing at some point to sell it. You know, you could start working your way down that.
Right, well, that's why I'm here, just to put it out there.
Stayed a long time to get your chance to say that, so I thank you. Thank you so much. All right, anybody else?
One quick thing.
Come back.
Traffic.
Traffic.
One small thing that could ease a lot of traffic and you probably know this better than most working on Wheeler Avenue. Is October thirty first passed, we were supposed to get rid of all of those concrete barriers. The one in front of Ella Kitchen is gone, but the one on Wheeler is still there. The one on Wheeler is far more detrimental to traffic than the one that was on Washington Avenue, cause it's so narrow. I mean, during certain times of the day, as you probably well know, you can't traverse one side of the street to, to, to the other. Um, it would be helpful if those barriers were not there and during the times of day that. I'm in the village, now that the weather is cold, there's nobody sitting there, so. Why are they there?
I mean, and we had extended conversation about that and you can go back and look at the videos of it. My personal view is separate from the question of what might happen in the spring, I think that. I agree with you, I think it's in the way and it's of limited value, I, I was outvoted on that.
Well, can we revoke? Because of the rip in the situation.
It'll be reconsidered in advance of the spring. There was a long conversation about it and a lot of community members spoke and not everyone agrees.
But in the spring, it's probably gonna be more useful to them. In the winter right now, it's not useful.
Will be reconsidered in advance of the spring is an overall vision of outdoor seating in the village center. Because there's a strong desire from a lot of people to have more outdoor seating. And we don't, as of now, have a, a comprehensive vision for exactly how to do that and how.
I, I hear you saying that outside seating and roads are two separate things.
So just to be clear, it's not that I'm just interested in outdoor seating, I'm totally interested in it. I think that the utility of it in the winter is near zero and it should get out of the way.
Yeah, okay, so if that's the case, then why can't we make it happen?
Well, just like, like this event, we had, we had multiple emails from supporters of keeping that area. We had multiple people here, and person that came in and spoke about the fact that it's become a local center where. You can buy, you know, a sandwich and eat it right there, you can get people up there. There are people that said that because of COVID, they still feel at least that's the only place. That they can somewhat feel safe of going out and they don't mind sitting outside because they have some heaters.
Short of that, I was at that meeting when the owners of the, the brewery and Villa Kitchen were here.
There was more than one, sir.
More, yeah, more than one, well, whichever one I was at. Uh, it was clear that the sole kitchen has a lot of weight in the community and um. They got to keep their barriers for whatever reason.
Well, it's not as simple as that. We had a lot of reasons and we talked to every business owner on Wheeler and we talked to a lot of people and it was a mix. You, you, it wasn't as if the community was sure, but most people don't find it bothersome.
Okay.
That, that was, that was the sense of the town, well, people.
I, I don't know who you're asking to get the sense of the town, but, but.
We're using every, every lever that we can to run a democracy, which means lots of different people giving lots of opinions.
I, I, I hear you, but it, it, it doesn't make sense to me.
Clearly.
It's the road.
Only it makes sense to me, that, just to give you a sense, Tom, and I, I agree with you on a lot of stuff.
Yeah.
But I think that outdoor seating on Wheeler Avenue and those barricades are a non-issue. It doesn't affect traffic as far as I'm concerned and it adds a ton to the village. And I'd have kept the ones on uh, Washington too.
Well, you know, John, the road is barely traversable now, close to the road.
We probably should move on.
That's okay.
Teed me up, I'm sorry, Tom.
It, it is in response to, to the two women that were up here. Why couldn't all these builders that are coming in and building all the, these buildings, whether right, wrong, or indifferent? In other community, like prior clip of many years back. The builders came in and they gave back to the town by building them a whole baseball field. Um, why couldn't that happen, you you know, here with future builders to come in, just a point.
Whether you're satisfied with the scale of it or not, every residential development entails a required payment into our recreation fund. And so uh uh for example, the toll on this project, three hundred and forty thousand bucks came into that and that turned into, among other things, bathrooms and parkway field for the first time in in our history. Uh so, you know, good things come out of that. So.
Okay.
And likewise, semi memorial and the one down that we'll do again.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
All right. David will be back in a moment. Uh, what we might as well get going here. Uh, we have two. Oh, oh, let me just say tomorrow night at seven thirty is our joint meeting with the school board. It's at their place in the high school library.
I'm expecting you to be there.
With the same energy.
I do not, I I do not envision there's a lot of exchange. I think it's it's a based on the school board guidelines, more of a hear what people think.
Is there an agenda for that? I know that's always a it's a a challenge, but.
Not on their site yet. I just looked earlier. Pre-wheeling conversation, bunch of stuff.
Yeah, I think the the school board was releasing the agenda today on their on their website.
Okay, is it? Okay.
Yeah.
But, all right, guys.
All right.
Thank you.
As much as this has been fun, I'm not sure I'm making tomorrow's meeting. But I'm gonna try to make the tree lighting. It's a hot cocoa.
Yes.
Yeah. I'm a huge fan of the Hallmark Channel, so I'm in the.
I'll make sure you save yourself.
The hot cocoa space. Are you gonna give us a a winter image for our Facebook page?
Yeah, I I is I know my Tony was working on uh for the beautification committee today to get the lights up.
Yeah.
So as soon as we get them up, I'll get some photos and get you guys a a more festive beer.
David, we need you back. Is there a motion to open the public hearing on introductory local law nine of twenty twenty two concerning the senior citizen real property tax exempt?
Those are.
Second, second, all in favor?
Hi.
I welcome to the public hearing. Eric, can I give the quick summary of this?
Sure. Uh, the state legislature um passed a law that enabled local municipalities to um increase the the threshold for tax exemption for senior citizens to fifty thousand dollars. Um, uh that enabled local municipalities to enact their own local laws to do so, uh which we are proposing.
So just to be clear, uh up a a family resident that has an income of up to fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, we have a sliding scale, so it's not as simple as that, but that is the bridge version.
Certainly. Uh, and that's a number that hasn't been adjusted in a long time.
Correct.
Any comments on that subject? It seems like a reasonable and appropriate thing to do from my standpoint. Comments of any kind from a member of the public? Let me just check on Zoom here and see if anyone raised their hand. I see no raised hands. Is there a motion to close the public?
I said move.
Second, second, all in favor? I, I, public hearing on this matter is closed. Is there a motion to open the public hearing on local law ten of twenty twenty two concerning the property tax exemption for persons with disabilities and limited incomes? So move, second. Second, all in favor?
Hi.
All right, welcome to our second public hearing. Eric.
Similar story. Um, this pertaining to people with disabilities and limited incomes, but same fifty thousand dollar threshold on the sliding scale.
Any comments from a member of the board? Any comments from a member of the public or anybody on Zoom? Raise your hand. There being none, is there a motion to move the public?
So.
Second, second, all in favor?
Hi.
Zip through to public hearings. Let me share my screen and we will go to the resolution. Okay. Resolution three thirty, all.
Three thirty is the minutes for the four of the minutes of the meeting of November fourteenth, two thousand twenty two.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments, questions, or corrections to the minutes?
No.
All in favor?
I.
Hi.
Motion approved. Michael, three thirty.
Result that the Board of Trustees hereby accepts the resignation of Benetti Recreation Assistant Panther Club effective March fourteenth, twenty twenty. Registration resignation letter attached.
Is there a second? Second. So this is cleaning up.
Correct.
Records.
Yeah.
Genetic departed a couple of years ago, but we just haven't closed the loop on that front.
That's right. They they actually take up a s- a space.
Uh, it's a good news about this is we're not losing a person, a person right now, because we're trying to get more.
That's right.
Uh, all in favor?
Hi.
I approve David three thirty two.
Result of the trustee hereby accept the resignation of James Patrana School Crossing Guard effective November twentieth, twenty twenty two.
Is there a second?
Second.
That one is current.
Yes, unfortunate.
Sorry to lose him. All in favor?
Hi.
I, motion approved. Michael, three thirty.
Whereas pursuant to section four sixty seven of real property tax law, local governments and school districts in New York State cannot to grant reduction on the amount of properties access paid by qualifying senior citizens by reducing the taxable assessment of the senior zone by as much as fifty percent. And whereas on August eighth, twenty twenty two, the governor signed legislation to amend section four sixty seven of the real property tax law to increase the amount of income property owners may earn for the purpose of eligibility for the senior citizen property tax exemption from twenty nine thousand to fifty thousand dollars. And whereas the Village of Pleasantville Board of Trustees desires to amend chapter one sixty six, article three, section sixteen of the Village Code to set the income limit with fifty thousand dollars, or the fifty that forty fifty percent senior citizen property tax exemption. And whereas the Village of Pleasantville Board of Trustees wishes to adopt a sliding scale to provide a benefit to seniors with incomes greater than fifty thousand dollars. And whereas a proposed local law was introduced on November fourteenth, twenty twenty two. And whereas the proposed action is a type two action pursuant to the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, and no further environmental review is required. And whereas the Board of Trustees is fully familiar with the proposed local law. Whereas a public hearing concerning introductory local law nine was held and closed on November twenty eighth, twenty twenty two. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby adopts introductory local law nine of twenty twenty two to amend chapter one six, article three, section sixteen of the code of the Village of Pleasantville concerning the senior citizen real property tax exemption, which will become local law nine of twenty twenty two upon its adoption.
Is there a second?
Second.
That fulfilling the terms of a public hearing we just completed. All in favor?
I.
I, motion approved. All three thirty four.
Whereas pursuant to section four thirty nine, the year of real property tax law, local governments and school districts in New York State can provide reduction up to fifty percent in the assessed value of the residence of qualified disabled persons. And whereas on August eighth, two thousand twenty two, the government signed legislation to amend section four fifty nine dash C of the real property tax law to increase the amount of income property owners may earn for the purpose of eligibility for the property tax exemption for persons with disabilities and limited income from twenty nine thousand to fifty thousand. And whereas the Village of Pleasantville Board of Trustees desires to amend chapter one sixty six, article eight, section thirty of the Village Code to set the income limit to fifty thousand for a fifty percent reduction in the assessed value of residents of qualified disabled persons. And whereas the Village of Pleasantville Board of Trustees wishes to adopt a sliding scale to provide a benefit to qualified disabled persons with incomes greater than fifty thousand. And whereas a proposed local law was introduced on November fourteenth, two thousand twenty two. And whereas a proposed action is a type two action pursuant to New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECR and no further environmental review is required. And whereas the Board of Trustees is fully familiar with the proposed local law. And whereas the public hearing concerning introductory law law nine, local law nine, was held and closed on November twenty eighth, two thousand twenty two. And now therefore be resolved that the Board of Trustees of Village of Pleasantville hereby adopts introductory local law ten of two thousand twenty two to amend chapter one sixty six, article eight, section thirty of the code of the Village of Pleasantville concerning the senior citizen real property tax exemption for persons with disabilities and limited incomes, which will become local law ten of two thousand twenty two upon its adoption.
Is there a second?
Second.
Right. Again, that is the subject of the second public hearing. Comments, questions?
Uh, we should just to note, let people know about this.
Yeah.
Yeah. There should be local law ten, introductory local law ten, nine nine.
So it's time online. Can we post this like on our social media?
Yeah.
Like, hey, this law was put into place yesterday. This is kind of what it means here, the links, boy.
Yeah, and it's um making its round already. So uh Foxwoods uh zeroed in on it there. They got the word around. But yeah, now that it's passed, we'll get the word out.
Right, we didn't pass the, well, that it was uh proposed.
Well, we're about to pass.
Yes.
All in favor?
Hi.
I, motion approved.
Now that's. Yes.
Three thirty five.
Result that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the following budget amendments for fiscal year ending twenty twenty three is listed below. Budget transfer of the general fund, nine thousand six hundred and ninety five dollars from uh New York State ERS retirement to New York State PFRS retirement. Uh, budget transfer of the wire fund from contingency, oh, sorry, thirty six dollars from contingency to software support.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments, questions? Thirty six dollars?
Yeah.
All in favor?
I.
I, motion approved, three thirty six.
Result of the Board of Trustees hereby approves the abstract who came on the same stage in November twenty eight, twenty twenty two from the general for fiscal year ending twenty twenty three, covering check numbers one oh five, six eight five to one oh five, seven six one from general fund one million eight hundred and seventy eight thousand eight hundred and sixty one dollars and sixty one cents. Water fund three hundred and eighty seven thousand four hundred and eight dollars and five cents, refuse fund fifty four thousand three hundred and fifty six dollars and one cent for a total of two million three hundred and twenty thousand six hundred and twenty five dollars and sixty seven cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
The big number.
Big one. This was our annual health insurance payment.
Right.
Hmm.
One.
Done.
We should not be so sick.
All right. All in favor?
Hi.
Motion approved. Michael, three thirty.
Result that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the hiring of the following part-time recreation assistant, job code two six nine, part-time available on an as-muted basis effective as of um I don't know what that means, but there's two different as of dates. Um, Anna from Luis, a rate of fifty dollars um effective December ninth, twenty twenty two, and Adonis Bondic, at a rate of fifty dollars, effective January third, twenty twenty three.
Is there a second?
Second.
So these are youth that are adult program teachers. They're not, it's not God. All in favor?
Hi.
I, motion approved, three thirty eight. Paul, you got another one?
Whereas pursuant to executive law, section three eighty one, um, per se one in energy law, section eleven dash one oh seven, the Department of State is authorized to promote gate regulations establishing the minimum standards for administration and enforcement of the New York State Uniform Fire Prevention and Building Code, Uniform Code and the State Energy Conservation Construction Code, the Energy Code. And whereas unless otherwise prescribed by the Secretary of State, Executive Law Section three eighty one two requires local governments to administer and enforce the Uniform Code and Energy Code. And whereas updated versions of the Uniform Code and the Energy Code became effective on May twelfth, two thousand twenty, and as a result, corresponding changes were necessary to part one thousand two oh three of title nineteen of the New York Codes, Rules and Regulations, Uniform Code and the Energy Code, Minimum Standards for Administration and Enforcement, nineteen NYCCR R, part twelve oh three. And whereas in December twenty nine, on December twenty nine, two thousand twenty one, the Department of State filed a notice of adoption of rule repealing and replacing nineteen New York C R R, part twelve oh three. And whereas the rule will become effective on December thirtieth, two thousand twenty two. And whereas the local governments have until December thirtieth, two thousand twenty two to update their code enforcement programs to comply with the new rule. And whereas the proposed local law men's chapter one and chapter ninety eight of the code of the Village of Pleasantville to comply with the minimum standards for administration and enforcement of the Uniform Code and Energy Code set forth in nineteen NYCCR R, part twelve oh three, adopted on December twenty nine, two thousand twenty one. And whereas the proposed actions are type two action pursuant to the State Environment Quality Review Act, SECR and no further environmental law review is required. Now therefore be resolved. The Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville shall hold a public hearing on Monday, December twelfth, two thousand twenty two at eight P M. At Village Hall, eighty Wheeler Avenue, Pleasantville, New York, to consider proposed local law to amend chapter one and chapter ninety eight of the Village Code concerning the administration and enforcement of the New York State Uniform Fire Prevention and Building Code, Uniform Code and the State Energy Conservation Construction Code, the Energy Code, to incorporate recent updates to nineteen New NYCCR R, part twelve oh three.
Is there a second?
Second.
I imagine there's a short summary of that storm of words.
Yes, so uh basically the state updated um their mandates for local building departments. Uh, so we had to update those uh accordingly. So the local law shows in in track changes what we were mandated to add and change. Um, a lot of it is administrative, some of it is more impactful. Um, uh, one, one instance is for school districts. We local governments typically have no role in the inspection of their facilities. This now has um local municipalities reviewing their annual fire inspections. And if we're not satisfied with them, we would interject and do inspections ourselves. So that's one example of how it could be.
Oh.
But for the most part, it's administrative.
And a requirement. So all in favor?
Hi.
I would approve three thirty nine.
Getting easy ones. Result that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the mayor's appointment of Susan Todd to the conservation advisory.
For a second.
Second.
Thank you, Susan. Uh, very much appreciated. All in favor?
I.
I approve three forty, David.
Result of the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the village administrator to enter into an agreement with StarNet Emergency Services to provide standby ambulance services on Saturday, July eighth, twenty twenty three for the twenty twenty three Pleasantville Music Festival contract.
Is there a second?
Second.
StarNet is our longstanding supplier of this service, will require they have two ambulances at the music festival. All in favor?
I.
I. We're on their calendar, three forty one.
Result that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the hiring of Luke Bryan, part-time recreation assistant, job class code two six nine with an hourly rate of twenty dollars, effective November twenty ninth, twenty twenty two.
Is there a second? Welcome, Luke. All in favor?
Hi.
I, motion approved, three forty two.
Result of the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby approves and ratifies the terms of a settlement agreement between the village and employee number nine oh one ninety three dated November twenty eighth, two thousand twenty two. It hereby authorizes the village administrator to execute all documents pertaining to the same and to take all actions consistent with the terms thereof.
Is there a second?
Second.
Personnel matter and therefore not uh a public document. The board has been briefed on it. All in favor?
I.
I, motion approved. Paul, bring us home.
Whereas. Whereas the superintendent of public works, village engineer has proposed changes to the village's street opening permit to reduce asphalt escrow fee from fifty dollars per square foot to fifteen dollars per square foot, increase sidewalk escrow deposit fee from twelve dollars per square foot to twenty dollars per square foot and incorporate standard construction detailed requirements. Now therefore may be a result that the village board of trustees hereby approves the amendments to the street opening permit and be a further result that the village board of trustees authorizes related amendments to section three subsection B's reopening excavation permit within the Masterpiece Agreement.
Is there a second?
I.
Our last meeting and work session at the car, our new superintendent of public works, simply didn't there. I went over this uh um modifying our escrow fees uh to make them lower for asphalt and a little bit higher for sidewalk concrete. We much appreciate his diligence. Uh, all in favor?
Hi.
I, motion approved. That is the last of our regular uh agenda items. Is there any new business from the Board? There any comment from a member of the public? They have mostly fled. I see no raised hands on Zoom. And uh so let me request the motion to adjourn and to return to work session for one more. But I moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
I.
I, motion approved. Thank you all. If you stuck with us, uh, our next regular meeting is on Monday, December twelfth. Good night. All right, so if we could return briefly to work session. Item we didn't get to was a debrief conversation on the movie block party.
Right.
All right. All right.
So um just all in. Uh, the event costs roughly thirteen thousand, eleven thousand and change was overtime expense. And then the remainder was rentals, you know, porta potties, tables, chairs, the electronics on, so. Um, you know, just a conversation about did Sunday work better than Saturday? Is Saturday the more ideal? Do we want to keep the same footprint? Obviously, we've got time to make those decisions, but just the.
How did this go from your standpoint, Paul?
Um, on our end, our cost of total expenses was about fourteen thousand four ten. Um, however, we were able to get sponsorship and about of about twenty thousand six hundred. So we were able to to have a surplus of six thousand one ninety, which that's what we've applied to, for example, getting the band for tree lighting ceremony for other events that will help us be able to, you know, donate. Um, in looking at, in looking at 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 the event itself, the fact, something that I think that that we're really considering is the rainy not having it be on like a Saturday and then the rain days on a Sunday, or maybe perhaps extending it to the following week so that we can have enough time to really assess if if, you know, if it's gonna be a bad weekend, then we're not stuck with trying to pick which one's a better day. And I think that was a difficulty that we had in why a lot of vendors ended up dropping. Um, the success of, for example, the beer garden, we were supposed to have food and, you know, drinks, everything was very low because it was really only, you know, two vendors and then I think really one food place. So in that aspect, um, I think that we could have had a lot more had we had better weather. Um, we definitely agree that we will not combine this ever again with with homecoming to not be worried about issues that come come up with that. Um, we're looking at maybe, starting maybe in September, a little earlier. Um, this time, like we did, we waited for the first week of October, but maybe we pushed it off earlier. Maybe the 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 second week of September, once, you know, school kind of be already in place and people will be back for vacations, things like that. Um, and then looking at the days, I mean, a lot of just from seeing, even though it was a Sunday, it was kind of a last minute thing, it was a rain day, the weather wasn't great, we still had a lot of people. Um, I think that had it been a nice day, we probably could have had maybe double. And had we had it on Saturday, be even more.
We should, I mean, you and I had this conversation that day, that that had it been a beautiful day on Saturday, it might have been too big.
It would have been rather been. So I don't know how to how we can, we can essentially block something from getting that big if it's the weather's great. Now, for an example, on the fun, the fun side, like this part for the kids, packed the whole time. The whole time that we were there, from essentially two to six, um, it was packed. The kids, this kid zone was used nonstop. The the, we had a magician nonstop, the face painter, the blue maker.
Very amusing.
Yeah, and and so in that aspect, I had parents coming up to to me and saying, this is amazing. Please do more events like this. Like the fact that, and and you know, they didn't have to pay anything. So a lot of and it again gathered, made a place of gathering. The people got to meet their friends, you know, the kids went to play. And you got to bounce around a little bit. And I think the aspect of the the car show really got a lot of people pumped too. Something different that they hadn't seen and it was right there. Uh, we had a lot of cars that still did come, even though it was kind of last minute, they weren't sure they would bring their cars out in bad weather. But um, so it's it's one of those kind of things where you know, if if we decide to do it again and we get good weather, we're gonna have a huge turnout. Um, in regard to to, you know, the concerns we had about beer garden area. People from beer garden were bringing drinks, but we didn't, what we didn't realize is we didn't have a security coming out of Seoul. So there were some people that just walked out of Seoul and just left and went into other areas. So those are things that we could definitely fix to control that aspect. But can we control how many people come if it's a nice day? That's a very difficult thing to to tell you. I I don't know how. Cause we didn't, we didn't promote it as big as we could have. We, because of the fact that we had the rain to let, I mean, the rain day, so there's one of those things again, any of our if our village is becoming more vibrant and more things are happening and people want to come see all this construction that's happening. It's gonna be a big event. So I don't know how we control that other than not have.
I wonder, and I'm not, uh, obviously having Wheeler and Washington closed helps helps visibility of all those businesses and certainly Lucio's was a key player on the Washington side. And might have felt different, obviously, if everybody bought the cars, you had some day change. I did wonder whether if Washington stayed open and the car show were in the in Memorial Plaza where the farm market is. That would require obviously doing this thing probably on a Sunday, planning on a Sunday instead of Saturday. Cause the farm market would be getting away there, but I don't know what that, that, what what that would help at least is 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 the circulation through the village wouldn't be as effective. It certainly didn't turn into a major problem, but it might have if there were twice as many people trying to film. And if it had been a nice day, it's part of the gippy weather day, even if that's, I I just throw that out there.
Yeah, I mean, I, I I like the idea of of that area. The only reason why we wanted to explore Washington is we've never done anything, as far as I know, from just working with the chamber since two thousand nine, we've never done anything really to benefit Washington.
Yeah.
Businesses, so we wanted to kind of give those folks a chance to say, here, we're gonna do this and hopefully this will work. Um, that was the idea there. Um, could we change that? I mean, we could and we could try. Obviously, you know, the big, Lucio's the one that did old car show and everything and they ended up and they and they raised, I think, over a thousand dollars and they gave that to the Nicholas Center. So
Great.
You know, all that stuff now, if if we had it at the at Morals, I don't know if they'd be as involved. And that, so I don't know if we lose that.
Yeah, I mean, there are pros and cons to all of it, and I don't know whether, I mean, do you think Saturday versus Sunday matters if it's planned that way?
Um, so I'd ask the businesses, just in general, and most businesses would prefer Sunday because it kind of adds another day of of businesses to them, like the retail. Obviously, the food places, they prefer more of a Saturday, because it adds more of a buy, people going out or even the, you know, the just people going out and like deciding they're gonna have a few drinks or whatever. That, I think, you know, those, so so I've seen both different um vendors ask for different dates.
Uh, here's the turn our fifth hour, and this is not happening again for like eleven months, possibly.
Yeah.
For the rest of the summer.
It's really interesting.
Yeah.
But it feels more like a brainstorm.
Yeah. So so that was that, that was my, my, my update.
So when are we talking about? That was a great event and I I look forward to brainstorming it.
Yeah.
About fifteen.
So it's about the same price as well. Give it to me. All right.
Don't take this as lack of it.
Yeah, no. Me too. I agree.
No, I think.
And I don't, I don't have brainstorming energy.
Yeah, exactly.
We can't hold brainstorms.